Hi, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening. Becky, are we now live? We're all here.
Thirty seconds. Give us just one moment, please. Okay, we are live now.
All right, everybody, let's make sure we mute our phones. Okay, so we're ready to begin tonight's Gardena City Council meeting for Tuesday, April 12, 2022. Madam City Clerk, will you call the role, please?
Mayor Serta.
Here.
Mayor Protem Tanaka.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Cascanian.
Present.
Councilmember Francis. Councilmember Francis. I see her. She's here. Councilmember Francis, can you unmute yourself?
She can't hear us.
Okay, well, I guess we can just, can I go on record saying that she is present?
We can, and while she's working on that.
Okay.
You still can't hear us? Still can't hear us?
He can't seem to hear us.
Becky, can we get IT over to Councilwoman Francis, please?
While IT is in route, let me just read this disclaimer right here. "In order to minimize the spread of the COVID-19 virus, Governor Newsom has signed AB 361. Please be advised that the council chambers are closed to the public and that some or all of the Gardena council members may be attending this meeting," excuse me, telephonically. "If you would like to participate in the meeting, you can participate via the following options. The first way is to view the meeting live on Spectrum Channel 22 or online at youtube.com/cityofgardena. The second way to participate is prior to the meeting, you can email the deputy city clerk at cityofgard-- sorry, publiccomments@cityofgardena.org by 5:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting and write public comments in the subject line. The third way to participate during the meeting is via the Zoom webinar. The telephone number is area code 669-900-9128, and the meeting ID number is 82425981009. Press the number nine, which is the raise your hand feature, and number six to unmute when you're prompted to. If you wish to speak live on a specific agenda item during the meeting, you may use the raise your hand feature during the item you wish to speak on. For non-agenda items, you will be allowed to speak during oral communication, and during public hearing, you'll be able to speak when I open the public hearing. Members of the public wishing to address the city council will be given three minutes to speak. The City of Gardena thinks you're in advance for helping us to take all the precautions in preventing the spreading of the COVID-19 virus." Councilmembers, are you able to get hearing yet? Not yet? Okay, let's just give her a couple of moments here.
Yeah, I heard you. All right.
Okay, can you hear us now, Councilwoman Francis?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, ma'am. Now we can count it. Okay, we can count it. We'll continue with the roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Okay, Councilmember Francis.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, all members of our council are present.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so tonight, we didn't have a closed session, so we can go ahead and begin tonight with our Pledge of Allegiance. And tonight, we have a pledge with us, Crystal Contreras, she's one of our recreation leaders. She will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Immediately following that, we will have our invitation by Mayor Protem Tanaka. Crystal, you can go ahead and begin when you're ready.
Place your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. You can just stay on for a few minutes. Mayor Protem, if you can lead us in tonight's invocation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This break. Father, we just come to you tonight with open hearts and open minds, and Father, we just hope that you will allow us to hear what is being said and to take what's being said and process it properly so that we can serve our community and our city in the best to our abilities, Father. Father, we also thank you, as we are in Holy Week, we just thank you for the things that are happening right now around the world. We hope that this Easter celebration would be one that would be memorable for all, including the Christians and everybody. And Father, we just pray for the Ukraine. We just pray, Father, that peace will come, that the terrorism over there will quit and that they can at least come back to their own country. Father, we thank you. We ask for peace in the world, and we just ask you to give us patience, kindness, and mercy, and for your sake, we pray.
Okay, amen. Thank you. Let's go back here to our pledge here for a second. Tonight's Pledge of Allegiance was led by Crystal Contreras, who's a Recreation Leader One for the City of Gardena. She works for one of our after-school programs located at Freeman Park. She's been a Gardena resident since birth and loves that she is able to live, work, and play in the city of which she loves. So, Crystal, thank you so much for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. We appreciate it. Give her a round of applause, everyone. Thank you again. And Mayor Protem, as always, thank you for leading us in our invocation. Appreciate it. Okay, so next, we have a presentation here for one of our commissioners here. Just like to certificate of recognition here being presented to Roy Kim. It's an official acknowledgement and genuine appreciation of his time on the Human Services Commission. So, we, the mayor, the members of the City Council, the City of Gardena, California, do hereby deem it a distinct honor and pleasure to commend you for your efforts, and extend our sincere best wishes of health, happiness, and a well-deserved success in all your future endeavors. And just want to thank Roy Kim for accepting the position of our Human Services Commissioner. Is he present tonight with us, Madam City Clerk?
I do not see him. I don't believe he is.
Okay.
His name does not show up on our list of attendees.
Okay, well, we thank him still for his service and accepting that position there. Okay, so next, we're going to move on to proclamations. Tonight, we have a couple of them. The first one is for DMV Donate Life Month, and I believe joining us tonight, we have Galen Thomas. And while I read this proclamation, Madam City Clerk, if you can bring her on, if she's here, the proclamation reads as follows. "Whereas organ, eye tissue, marrow, and blood donations are life-giving acts recognized worldwide as expressions of compassion to those in need, and millions of lives are saved and healed each year because of these donations. And whereas more than 100,000 individuals nationwide and more than 20,000 in California are currently on the national organ transplant waiting list, and on average, 17 people die each day while waiting due to the shortage of donated organs. And whereas the need for donated organs is especially urgent in Hispanic, Latino, and African-American communities, and a single individual's donations of the heart, lungs, liver, kidneys, pancreas, and small intestines can save up to eight lives. And whereas the donations of tissue can save and heal the lives of more than 75 people, and deceased organ donors saved more than 40,000 lives last year, the most ever. And whereas any person can register to be an organ, eye, and tissue donor regardless of age or medical conditions, and over 17 million Californians have signed up with the state-authorized Donate Life California donor registry to ensure their wishes to be organ, eye, and tissue donors are honored. And whereas a California resident can sign up with the Donate Life California donor registry online or when applying or renewing their driver's license or ID cards at the California Department of Motor Vehicles. So, at this time, I proclaim April 2022 to be DMV Donate Life California Month in the City of Gardena, and encourage all Californians to check yes when applying for or renewing their driver's license or ID cards, or by signing up at www.donatelifeCalifornia.org So, I believe we have Galen with us. Galen, would you like to say anything? I don't know if she's unmuted or not.
Madam Mayor, we noticed there are two Galen Thomases, so we're going to try and promote the other one.
Okay.
Obviously isn't working.
Okay. Ms. Thomas, if you're there, you can go--
Yes, I'm here. I don't know if you can see me.
We see your name there. Your audio is going through?
Yeah, okay. Well, I don't know why the picture's-- oh, my camera's not on, and I-- Do you control the camera?
Madam City Clerk, do we control the camera, Deputy Clerk?
No, actually, Ms. Thomas, you do.
Okay, there's no-- usually, there's a thing that could-- oh, here, there it is. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, there I am. Okay, I'd first of all, I'd like to thank you for bringing awareness for organ, eye, and tissue donation. I'm also a resident of Gardena and happy to be in the community that we share. I'm a mom, a grandmother, and as a few months ago, a great-grandmother. My journey with eye, with organ donation has been quite a long one, and I needed a liver transplant. It was failing, and I was in the hospital. I was on life support and just waiting for a match from a donor, which fortunately, I was able to receive. And after 10 years, the liver began to fail, and I needed another liver. And again, I was, I waited about four months in the hospital, in and out of consciousness. But through prayer and through the kindness of our citizens who are kind enough to make a decision to help someone else live, I received my second liver transplant. And it's been doing quite well since. But as a result of liver failure, often you get kidney failure. And so, my kidneys began to fail a few years ago. I was on dialysis for three years, and fortunately, I was able to receive my kidney about, almost, it's a year in the end of May. So, I'm a three-time recipient. Just a little more about me, I'm a licensed clinical social worker. I've worked in foster care and adoption. I've worked in mental health. I've worked with veteran women. And because of the kindness of people and organizations and cities and places like yours that are out there telling the community about this need, many people like me are able to continue to live and thrive and live well-functioning lives. And I'd just like to thank you again for giving us opportunity to accept this proclamation so that we can go on and spread the news to others how difficult it is to get an organ in these circumstances, but how wonderful it is when people are willing to open their hearts and make a decision to help the lives of those who are in need of organ. So, I want to thank you again for allowing me to speak to this issue, and I hope you continue to do that so that you might be a part of the solution that we need so badly. So, thank you very much.
Well, thank you, and thank you for sharing your firsthand experiences with donations like this here. So, everybody, give her a round of applause just for coming and sharing that with us. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Okay, so next, we have another proclamation tonight, and this one here is called "Challenge the Norm and Influence of Marijuana Use on Youth Day." We have a couple of people, Tracy coming in and can't remember the student's name, but they're coming on. While they are, I'm going to read the proclamation here. It reads as follows. "Whereas the unfolding of historical events dating back to the 1970s has closely associated the day of April 20th or 4/20 with the culture of marijuana use, especially here in the United States. And whereas the compassionate use of 1996 and Proposition 64 were initiated statutes that paved the way for legislation, I'm sorry, legalization of medical and recreational marijuana in the state of California. And whereas legalization effectively would perpetuate the culture that promotes marijuana use, therefore resulting in increased social acceptance and a company decreased perception of harm. And whereas a critical issue that lies at the core of this phenomenon is increased youth access to marijuana at alarming rates. Further, most recent findings of community assessment conducted by the Substance Abuse Prevent and Control SAPD of the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health within its servicing plan area, SPA, which includes the City of Gardena, show that 59% of those surveyed perceived it to be very easy and somewhat easy to get marijuana on the streets. And 23% perceived marijuana use in the neighborhood to be a major problem. And whereas the same assessment study established the mean age of initiating marijuana use amongst users were, users within SPA A to be 16.7 years, which is younger than the legal age of 21 years for possession and use. So, at this time, the City of Gardena, we proclaim April 20th, 2022, or 4/20, to be "Challenge the Norm and Influence of Marijuana Use on Youth Day." To call on and unite Gardena to undertake concerted actions to inform and educate youth and adults about the harmful effects of marijuana use on individuals and public health, especially on the development of brain, as well as regarding social costs in the terms of injuries, loss of lives, and destruction of public and private property that occur in result of impaired driving." So, we have Tracy on tonight with us, and also Valentina. Would you guys like to say something at this time?
Of course, yes, we would. Thank you, Mayor Serta. Good evening, Mayor Serta and Council. Again, my name is Tracy Satoitari, current Chair of Adult Coalition here in Gardena, Gardena Drug and Alcohol Abuse Prevention, GDA. We focus on substance abuse prevention, making sure that the youth and families are aware of the harms and risks involved with substance use. And in this case, with marijuana use especially for teens, whose brains are still developing well into their mid-20s. Early use of marijuana can cause issues with memory, verbal comprehension, and poor problem-solving skills. By supporting our efforts with this proclamation, you're helping us to keep Gardena youth informed and to make healthy choices. As always, we thank you for your unending support of all of our efforts. And with that, I'm going to pass it on to one of my students in our high school task force group, Valentina, to say a little bit more from her perspective.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Valentina Martinez. I am a senior student of Gardena High School and a member of the high school task force. The importance of this proclamation is legal does not mean that marijuana is safe, especially for the youth. As a student, I've noticed that most of the kids these days use it to get away from all of their problems or as a trend, and that ill-liquids and vapes popular among the youth doesn't only contain nicotine, but marijuana mixed with fruity flavors, which are also attractive to the youth. We knowing that one nicotine vape cartridge is the same as a smoking, a pack of cigarettes, what does that compare to when the youth are vaping marijuana? Every year, we recognize our anti-4/20 campaign efforts on Gardena High School campus to highlight the health harms around marijuana. Every day, we see these products being sold in stores because they are illegal, but this doesn't mean that it is safe, especially to youth who are still growing. Your brain continues to develop until the age of 25. If youth uses it at a young age, imagine what damage it will, it will reach once they turn 25. We asked our leaders to protect us by making sure that products as harmful as marijuana and vapes are out in the reach of youth. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Tracy and Valentina, thank you guys both for being here tonight and sharing that information with us. So, everybody, give them a round of applause, please.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, so next, we have appointments. Does any member of the council have any appointments to be made to any committees, commissions, councils, or boards at this time, besides me? No? Okay, so at this time, I'd like to make an appointment to our Human Services Commission. I'd like to appoint Tamoa Amoah King Nat Jr. I don't know if he's present with us tonight, but I think he would make a very good Human Services Commissioner, somebody who's very much concerned about our community, and I think he'll represent that position very well. So, at this time, I'd like to take-- Oh, man. Well, we're bringing him in, but let's go ahead and take a quick vote here, and then we'll let him say a few words, if you like. So, at this time, I made the motion to appoint him at this time. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, a motion was made by myself and a second by Mayor Protem Tanaka. Will you call the role, please?
Mayor Serta.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Tanaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Cascanian.
Yes.
And Councilmember Francis.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, guys, for helping us to make an appointment for him. And I saw him on there. King, if you're on there, if you'd like to say anything, you've just been approved to be our new Human Services Commissioner. Would you like to say something?
Yeah, yeah. Hello, everybody, and thank you, the mayor, Tasha Seda. And I'm so happy for that appointment, and I'm so happy to serve the city and to bring all my best and all my, anything that I can do to help the city and to serve the community. So, thank you so much, everybody, and I'm ready.
Okay, well, thank you. A lot of work ahead, so. Actually, I said, thank you again for accepting that position.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so moving on to our consent calendar here. I'm sure everybody's got the opportunity to take a look at it and go through it. Madam City Clerk, do we have anybody from the public wishing to speak on any items on the consent calendar?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not.
Okay. Does any member of the council, would they like to discuss any items separately in this here?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to discuss 8H and 8I regards to the engineered design for Budlong Avenue and Halldale Avenue and 8I, or contract increase with MACRO for the vision.
Okay. So, at this time, can, is anybody else, any other items, anybody else who might discuss separately? If not, can I get a motion to approve everything with the exception of 8H and 8I?
Some of--
Seconds.
All right, Madam City Clerk, there was a motion made by Councilwoman Francis and a second by Councilmember Henderson. Will you call the role, please?
Councilmember Francis.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Tanaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Cascanian.
Yes.
And Mayor Serta.
Yes. Okay, so let's go back. The questions we have regarding both items, sir?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I was, so with the engineered design services, these, this is just, is it for similar to what we did on Venice, where we're improving the street, you know, the ramps and the curbs or repaving streets for Budlong, for the entire length of Budlong or just Budlong and Halldale? I wasn't quite sure of what was all involved in this.
Mr. Senator, Alan, either one of you would like to--
Alan, you want to take this?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. It is very much similar to Western. The one difference is some of the pavement is in a very good, or not a very good condition, but good enough condition, in which we don't have to put a new layer of asphalt on top of it. We'll potentially do what's called a slurry seal, which is almost like an asphalt emulsion that gives a new wearing surface to good asphalt and extends a life. So, it'll be very, very similar, curbs, gutters, overlay, and then the addition of some slurry.
Okay, and the length of Budlong and Hall, is it for a block, two blocks, or say from 139th or something to, what are the streets that are all involved? Where does it start? How far does it go? I guess that's my question. That's a better question.
Sure. Budlong is from El Segundo Boulevard to RBB, and then Halldale is from El Segundo Boulevard to 135th.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then item number 8I, question you had?
Okay, and the question with this one, was it the last council meeting that we approved an increase, an overrun for the scheduling, you know, synchronizing the traffic and all that? So, is this, is this the same where we approved the-- that? So is this, is this the same where we approved the increase? Or the possibility of increase, a contract overrun, I guess it could be?
Clint or Ernie, either one?
Go ahead, Ernie.
Good evening, everyone, mayor, council members. So this is a contract extension for additional, for additional funds to both contracts. These contracts were originally approved back in like twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, before the pandemic. And as the project's been going, these are our big, big IT infrastructure projects for us. The pandemic really slowed a lot of things down, but allowed us to still move through the projects. So MACRO is our project manager for both of these big projects. So we need a little bit of extra money, that's why we're here for your approval, to be able to wrap up the, the projects. So we're at the tail end of them almost.
Okay, and the G-Trans real time, that's a part of the, the project approved from the last time, last council meeting? Is that the same thing?
Um, no, um, varies. I mean, our last, I think, project we brought was our buses, right? So, so the real time, this software will be on those buses. But the, the use is to get the infrastructure on our, so our real time is the, is the real time smart bus, they call it, that we're deploying across all our buses. So right now, we're what they call in the testing phase. So we have some, we have six buses that are being tested currently. The public doesn't see this part yet, but this is kind of all being tested in-house, getting all the bugs out before we do a go-live launch.
Okay, and how, how much is the increase?
So for one of the projects, which is our scheduling software, that's about a thirty-two-thousand-dollar increase. And then on the AVL, which is the real time, it's about a forty-six-thousand-dollar increase.
Okay, but this is not coming out of general fund money, is that correct?
That is correct. That is, is not coming out of general fund. It's, it's no general fund at all.
It's coming from?
It's our G-Trans budget, budgeted items. So we use different state local dollars that we have.
Yeah, Councilmember, Councilmember Francis, if I may add, so projects like this is a huge, like Mr. Crespo indicated, this is a huge infrastructure as far as IT project is concerned, you know, our scheduling and buses and whatnot. So there's going to be components that are going to be added along the way. So if you think of, let's say, a Microsoft migration of, let's say, Microsoft Office, for instance, you know, something that's, you know, I can, I can use it as an example. So Microsoft Word would be one of them, PowerPoint would be another one, and so on and so forth. So and then, you know, obviously, you know, between the time when we started the project until now, you know, inflation has occurred, so there's going to be increases in costs. And then the last thing that I wanted to say is that whenever we have a G-Trans item, I want to say that it would never have any general fund dollars involved in, in those projects. So as it's a G-Trans-related project or item, it will never have general fund.
All right. Thank you so much for the information. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, guys. Okay, so can I get a motion to, excuse me, approve items number eight H and eight I?
A some move.
Is there a second?
Madam, Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, but there is a hand that was raised on that item.
Oh, okay. Madam City Clerk, will you open it up for speaker?
Have a speaker, Sherrell Diggs.
Okay.
Hi, everybody, and thank you for answering my question. I, I'm not sure, quite sure if it's going to be along the same lines as what you guys were talking about, but I want to bring up the synchronization of the lights on Rosecrans between, I would say, what, Bernando and Brenda, I'm not pronouncing it right, but.
Ms. Diggs, Ms. Diggs, that, that is a separate item, and you can bring that up under oral communications. Right now, we're only discussing the contract increase.
Gotcha. Okay.
Well, just stay tuned. So it'll be just about a minute or so, we'll be going.
All right, thank you.
Okay, all right. Okay, so can, I'm sorry, are there any more questions out there, Madam City Clerk? Or, no?
No.
Okay. With that being said, can I get a motion to approve item number eight H and eight I?
A some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, there was a motion made by Councilwoman Francis and a second by Councilmember Henderson. Will you call the roll, please?
Mayor Protem Tanaka?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I would like to start again, please. Councilmember Francis?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Tanaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Cascanian?
Yes.
And Mayor Serta?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so next up is, we don't actually have anything to report from Planning and Environmental Quality Commission, so we're going to move on to oral communications. Madam City Clerk, I know we have at least one person wanting to speak. Is there any more?
It does not appear so. Sherrell Diggs has, is the only member of the public with her hand up.
Okay, so let's go ahead and bring her on. Okay, Ms. Diggs, okay, you can go ahead and speak now.
Okay, thank you so much. So my concern is the commute, especially in the morning and evening. There seems to be a jam right at the Popeyes Chicken, which, what, what is that Budlong? From Budlong to the freeway, the lights are not synchronized in it. It would be, to me, really simple to do that so that there will be a constant flow of traffic, especially in the mornings.
I'm sorry, you said Budlong, from, from Budlong and then going east towards the freeway off of, you said Rosecrans?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just, it just really gets frustrating when you're trying to get, you know, just a block. It's actually a block that just needs to be corrected. Just, you know, past the casino and, and onto the freeway to coordinate the lights.
Okay. Well, thank you for bringing that information to us. We're gonna make sure we pass that information on to our public works and see what we can do to get that synchronization going there for you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you again for bringing that to our team. Okay. All right, Madam City Clerk, there's no one else? Nope? Okay, let's move on to, thank you. Let's move on to departmental items here. First up is item number eleven A, Mr. City Manager.
Mayor Serta, members of the city council, agenda item eleven A is to approve contract with TCS Risk Management Services for third-party administrator, TPA selection process for workers' compensation claims administration. In September two thousand and seven, council conducted a request for proposals for firms to provide TPA services for our workers' compensation claims administration, and there were ten proposals received. The top three candidates were interviewed. AdminSure was determined to be the top candidate and was awarded a contract. Since the initial selection, the city had exercised two five-year extensions, one from October thirty-first, two thousand and twelve, through November first, two thousand and seventeen, and subsequently one from November first, two thousand and seventeen, through October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. Since contract with AdminSure will expire October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, with the current yearly cost of one hundred forty-four thousand three sixty, staff is recommending that an RFP be conducted for a complete TPA selection process for workers' compensation claims administration. The city has utilized AdminSure for the past fifteen years, and staff feels it is prudent to contract with a consultant who is familiar with the most current, efficient, and effective systems to process claims in a proactive manner that ensures a timely outcome for both the employee and the city. Staff is recommending TCS Risk Management Services to assist in and see the RFP process to completion for TPA services for workers' compensation claims administration. TCS Risk Management Services provides workers' compensation program management and consulting services to public and private clients. Since two thousand and one, TCS Risk Management has helped clients more effectively manage their workers' compensation risks by employing program metrics, identify program cost drivers and loss trends, then formulate and implement solutions, and quantify results and savings. Outcomes are measured to assess effectiveness of the solutions and to refine solutions to provide the greatest financial results. The financial impact is thirty-one thousand dollars from the workers' compensation fund. What's required is to approve this contract.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, do we have any comments or questions? Okay, let's start with Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. City Manager, regards to the AdminSure contract expiring October thirty-one, is there a penalty if we terminate that contract early and go right over to TCS?
So, good question, Councilmember Henderson. So there's two parts there. So first, the contract for AdminSure, there is no termination penalty provided, we provide, you know, provided that we provide them with appropriate number of days that is required when you, just like any, you know, any contract that you terminate. Second, the, the contract with, with TCS Risk Management Services is not to replace AdminSure. This, this company will provide us with the guidance and expertise to select the next TPA. So this, this consultant is just here to, 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 to give us the expertise to, to figure out, you know, who, who do we select next? Because it's, it's, it's a very complex process and very technical.
Okay. Any more questions?
Second question, one more question.
Go ahead.
Yeah, one more question. So in regards to the, um, the funding for, will the workers' comp fund and fund whoever the new contract becomes, or that still comes out of general fund?
No, the workers' compensation fund will fund the entire AdminSure, not, not the company that, that will replace, replace AdminSure.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Any more questions or comments?
Um, Madam Mayor, I do, if I may.
Go ahead.
Okay, so as, as I understand it, TCS is a consultant that's going to help us find a third-party administrator for our workers' comp? Is that it?
That is correct.
Okay, and so, but we didn't need to do a proposal for this company, or we, we know that they're a good company, and, I mean, we didn't have to go out and see if this is the best, best company or best cost or?
So as with any professional services contracts, we, we are not required to do an RFP to do so. The reason why we select TCS is that they've done some work for us in the past. They've worked with G-Trans, with their workers' comp, um, projects that they were working on. And also, their, TCS is well-known in the industry. They, you know, they, they're contracted by Santa Monica and all these other bigger places. So we, we have enough references for them to be qualified to do this kind of work for us. And they're very well-known in the industry.
Okay, so they're well-known, and they, they've done work for us before?
That's correct. They've done work for us before. And we're satisfied.
And you're satisfied?
More than satisfied, yes.
More than satisfied. And is there a, a time limit? Is, is this a forever contract or revolving contract, or is that from January to March or something like that? Is, is there a time limit with this?
No, the, the contract is for thirty-one thousand. There is no time, the timeframe for that. It's just for, for them to help us select the new TPA. Once that selection process is complete, then our, our relationship with TCS would then end unless we need them for something else.
How long, how long does an effort like this typically take? Is it months or?
Months. At least a couple of months, three months, so on.
Two months, three months?
Yes.
And so when, so it's, it's a flat fee, thirty-one thousand, it takes two months, six months, that's all they get?
That's correct.
Okay, and there's, there's no hurry up with this? They can take their time if they, they need to?
Um, we would like them to, to, to finish work as soon as possible. I mean, this is in our best interest really to, to get this thing done as soon as possible. Some of these cases that we have with workers' comp, you know, their time is of the essence, and we don't want to, you know, put this off as, as, you know, as much of, you know, we'd like to get it done as soon as possible.
Councilwoman Francis, in the proposal that they have provided us, there is a timeline of the expected metrics that we have, of the expected tasks that we have, especially since the contract with our current TPA ends in October, and we're, we're going to be doing this RFP if we decide to, depending on who bids on the, on the contract for the TPA services, obviously, we have to bring that back to council. So we, as you can see on their proposal, there is an expected timeline of when their services for this specific contract assistance will be taken.
Yes, I wasn't clear on that. Thank you so much.
We, we have to select one before November first. So, I mean, they'd have to, they have to work within that timeline, between now and November first.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Madam City Clerk, do we have anybody from the public who wishes to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not.
Okay.
Mr. City Manager, how many people are this going to affect as far as worker comp cases?
Um, Mayor Protem, in what sense do you, are you referring as far as the?
Well, in the transition, how many people would that affect?
Staff-wise, or the current cases that we have in workers' comp?
Current cases?
Uh, Mr. Beaman, are you here? Well, it's a hundred and sixty-three current cases.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
All right, I'm sorry, Madam City Clerk, did you, I, I don't recall what you said.
Uh, my response was that we do not have any member of the public wishing to speak.
Okay. That being said, can I get a motion to approve the contract?
A move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Sorry to hear who said that?
Mark.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, motion is made by Mayor Protem Tanaka and a second by Councilmember Henderson. Will you call the roll, please?
Mayor Protem Tanaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Cascanian?
Yes.
Councilmember Francis?
Yes.
Mayor Serta?
Yes. Okay, next up is item number eleven B, Mr. City Manager.
Mayor Serta, members of the city council, agenda item eleven B is the capital improvement project update. Staff recommends that city council receive and file the City of Gardena Capital Improvement Plan, or CIP, update as of December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. The capital improvement plan provides a roadmap to maintain the infrastructure required for a community to operate, including streets, parks, and recreation areas, sidewalks, and bikeways, sanitary sewers, and storm drains. City's goal is to utilize this roadmap to continually maintain the safety and aesthetics of the city's streets, facilities, parks, medians, and equipment at the highest level possible. Capital Improvement Plan offers a comprehensive framework, the infrastructure improvements planned within the city, as well as providing a clear and concise summary of those planned improvements to the city council. The attached presentation details the current status of work in progress as well as upcoming projects. We have a presentation tonight. Director Beaman is going to be leading the presentation, or actually the mechanics of it, and we have staff available if you have any questions.
Okay.
Let me share my screen here. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, as I mentioned, this is our CIP program update. This is, this covers everything that we've done as of December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. We have, again, as I mentioned, we have Mr. Beaman here. We're gonna be tag teaming here as far as the CIP projects that we're gonna be highlighting. Next page. Okay, so this is, this highlights the parks and facilities completed or in construction projects as of, again, December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. Two year left, there, those are just job numbers that we assign. And then the second column is who pays for it, right? The, the funding sources, then obviously the project name, what we budgeted, and what, next to that is what we've spent so far, and then the status. So I'm not gonna go through line by line in the interest of time. As you can see, there's some, some park and loop projects that we've done at Mass Fukai, including the fence and structures. We've also done some much-needed roof rehabs at Nacogdoona Community Center. All those are completed and highlighted and bold. The ones that we have in construction so far, we've mentioned plenty, many times that we have some much-needed roof rehab at City Hall. Every time it rains, it, you know, floods the offices, and that comes at a hundred and eighty-nine, a hundred and ninety thousand dollars that will be budgeted for that. And since it, we were just getting that And since it, we were just getting that started, we've only spent about seven fifty. And then the last, last one we have here on this page, Park and Loop, the Raleigh Park Baseball Diamond Restroom Rehab. We budgeted about three forty-four on that. We've spent so far seventy-six thousand, and again, it's in construction. The total, total parks and facilities, projects that we've completed or in construction is about a million dollars. We've completed or spent about half of that, about five hundred thousand. Next page. Some pictures of some of the projects that we, we, we mentioned. This, this is the Mass Fukai fence improvements. You can see on the left during the construction and to the right, completed fencing. This really highlights the, one of the before and after aesthetics. Again, this is Mass Fukai shade structure to the, to the left. Before that, it's really dated and old and, quite frankly, unsafe. And you can see after, new concrete pad, new benches and picnic tables, and then obviously the main highlight would be the straight structure. And landscaping. This is at the Nakakoka Community Center. The roof rehab to the left is when we started working on it, and then to the right is newly completed roof at Nakakoka. This is the Raleigh Park Restroom Rehab. As you can see to the left, as they were constructing that, there's, there was nothing there. And then the schematic shows how that looks like. So some of the parks and facilities, projects that we had in design or in the planning stages, obviously it's not yet ready to go. We have a number of things here. Park and Loop, this is for Mass Fukai Master Plan. This is just the design and planning stages for, for Mass Fukai improvements. This, this isn't the construction cost, obviously, because the budget is, is only seventy-one thousand five hundred. We're currently in study here, so we haven't spent anything. The next one is the Rosecrans Community Center. This, this highlights a property acquisition base. We paid three and a half million for that. Paid for by the twenty-twenty-one bond proceeds, which, you know, essentially was paid by Measure G. So obviously that has closed. We are now the owners of the, that property. We spent about three, about three point five million dollars. The Gardena Community Aquatic and Senior Center, it's in design. We've had a groundbreaking last week that's paid for, going to be paid for by the twenty-twenty-one bond proceeds, again, being paid by Measure G. The planning stage cost on that is about one point two million. We spent about a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars in design costs. Lastly, the Fire Station One Fifty-Eight Roof Rehab, that is being paid by deferred maintenance. Some, some of the monies that we set aside from general fund and put in a different fund so that when things like this happen, we have the money to actually pay for some of these expenditures. We budgeted about a hundred and ninety-five thousand there. We've spent about thirty-five thousand so far. This next slide covers street sewers and stormwater. These are completed or in construction. You know, a number of these, local improvement eight, two thousand eighteen, nineteen, the Public Works Sewer Equipment Purchase, the Pavement Management Program, and the Western Avenue Street Improvement Programs, being funded by a variety of different funding sources, gas tax, sewer fund, Measure M, and SB one. As you can see, those are all been completed. Some of the things are still in construction. The Van Ness Avenue Street Improvement from Rosecrans to One Thirty-Fifth and One Thirty-Ninth Street, that's from Van Ness to Western, being paid for by Prop C and Measure M. We budgeted one point four million, but we've spent about half a million so far. There is a sewer pump right at the PD station that needs to be replaced. That cost eighty thousand dollars. It's still in construction. We haven't spent anything yet. And lastly, the pedestrian safety improvement for twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, being paid for SB eight twenty-one and Measure R. We budgeted three eighty for that. We haven't spent anything and it's still in construction. Some of the, some pictures that we took, this is the local streets improvement. We overlaid three hundred and seventy-five square feet of asphalt and twelve new curb ramps. This is the, the back truck that we just mentioned. Just paid, paid for by the sewer fund. This is to maintain eighty-eight miles of storm drains. The Western Avenue Street Improvement, we overlaid three hundred and seventy thousand square feet, thirty new curb ramps, added sixty-one new trees, ten thousand one hundred square feet of sidewalk. As you can see, you know, our public work crews, hard at work. Van Ness Avenue One Thirty-Ninth, quite an improvement there. Go ahead, Ray. Some of the things, some of the projects that we have for street sewers and storm waters, that's still in design and planning, not in construction yet. We're on this page. You know, just, you know, we're not going to go through all of them, but as you can see, we have about, we don't have the total here, but you know, a lot has been budgeted for this and it's still in design. So obviously we haven't, we haven't spent a whole lot. There it is, the total is about fifteen point six million, and we've spent about six hundred and forty-five thousand, six forty-six. We talk a lot about the pavement condition index or the PCI. We tout that Gardena is one of the best, if not the best in the South Bay, and, and you can see clearly in this map where we are and how we really compare to other city, neighboring cities that we have in the South Bay, and Gardena clearly is on the top. And this just highlights some, some G-Trans updates. Purchasing of eighteen CNG buses, budget of thirteen point three million. We, that is completed. And you can see all around the city, we have these big-bellied solar trass receptacles. We've completed all of those. We spent about two hundred and ten thousand dollars on that, and those are all paid for by federal and local funds. Go back, Ray. Go back a little bit. One more. And we, you know, we just gone through, talking about some of the big projects that G-Trans has, scheduling system, the real-time information system, these are it. As you can see, we have some fueling station projects, a pretty big one, five point two million. It's still in progress. We only spent eight sixty. We talked about the Signal Priority Project. We're about halfway there. And then lastly, there's a digital radio migration project. It's the radio system for the buses. Just about under half a million dollars, and we haven't spent anything on that. Still in progress. All in all, G-Trans is looking at spending twenty-three point five million, and we've spent about sixteen point two million so far. Go ahead. So some of the major community projects that we want to make sure that the community and the city council is updated. We talked about the Mass Fukai improvements. This is going to be a master planned park improvement. We think we can come in just under seven million dollars here. The funding is available already. It's going to be in, being paid for Park and Loop primarily in Measure A and partly by the twenty-twenty-one bond proceeds. It's in the planning stages currently. Rosecrans Community Center, since we're trying to determine the, the uses, we're, there's a lot of things that we're still trying to figure out. As I mentioned, maybe a meeting or two ago, that building, although it's being demolished and a new building being erected on, on top of it, we are trying to see if we can save the basement component of that building, because as you know, excavating basements is very, very expensive. If we can save that, we're already ahead of the game. So, so we, you know, we're trying to determine the total cost on this, but we, we've only put the acquisition cost for the, the community center, which is three and a half million. It's going to be paid for by Park and Loop, or it was paid for by Park and Loop in twenty-twenty-one bond proceeds. Lastly, we've seen the, the groundbreaking for the, the Community Aquatic and Senior Center. At the total cost of that is going to be eight point, eighteen point three million. Year-to-date expenditures, two point eight million. That's just going to be in design, planning stages. The funding source for that, it's a variety of different funding sources, Prop sixty-eight, you know, the eight and a half million dollars that we got from the state, along with Congresswoman Waters' twenty-twenty-two community projects. I believe that's one point four. And the balance will be paid for by the twenty-twenty-one bonds, which in turn will be, will be paid for with Measure G general fund money. Go ahead, Ray. That concludes the, the CIP program update. Be happy to answer any, answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Does any member of the council have any questions at this time? Okay, let's start with Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. City Manager, thank you for that report. One question, as, as we get better at these grants and things, as we create these facilities, in regards to the programming for the Rosecrans Community Center, I just wanted to see if we can advise our staff to, and the community, as we start figuring out what we do with that space, to see what programming then gets us the type of funding and additional grants that we want to secure for that facility so we can offset some of the costs. That's just one thing I want to add. But the other thing, in regards to the deferred maintenance for the firehouse, does LA County own those buildings or do we own those buildings?
We do. Yeah, we do. What we did was you share the, we shared the cost for that, the roof replacement. So they paid half of that and we paid for, for half of the, the, the cost for that.
Okay, and but the deferred maintenance, do we share that or is that just us all together since they're serving?
No, that's, that's our part.
Okay.
A number of years ago, a few years ago, we didn't even have any deferred maintenance. So if, if that happened a few years ago, we didn't have any deferred maintenance money in that fund, that would have came from the general fund coffers. That would have came from your, our reserves. But since then, since we have, you know, Measure G and we have an influx of cash, we, we've been saving little by little, putting half a million here, a million here, and the deferred maintenance fund so that when things like this happen, we're not shocked as far as, hey, we got to, you know, pay for half a million, and that comes from our reserves, right? So it's better to put that away now so that, you know, your reserves don't look like it's dipping and spiking all the time.
Now, do we get to record half of the facility on our balance sheet as far as an asset or how, how does it work?
Uh, it would have to be in the capital, it would have to be in a fixed asset. It's going to be in the balance sheet. It's going to be, does it extend the life of the building? Yes. So you can capitalize that essentially, but the overall value of the building, it's already predetermined. In fact, that building is actually being collateralized in one of their bonds. So you are able to capitalize the appreciation on that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Rodney?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, it's, it's not so much, you know, a question. It's more of a kudos to the City Manager and all the teams. Because if you looked at the presentation, a lot of the projects were under budget, completed and under budget. They were funded by not our general fund, but through grants and creative things that we were able to obtain. And even the projects that are coming, you know, we have to give great praise to our team that goes out there, finds money, and then these, fund these projects. Because even the Measure G money, I mean, that was, that was a godsend to get that because, like we promised, we were going to use that money for our community and nowhere else, and that's what we're doing. So we are totally blessed to have what we have in the city. So thank you, City Manager, and for your entire team that put those together.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I do want to recognize our, our, the team that's here tonight. Ray Beeman, obviously on the finance side, but you know, Alan Riggs, Director of Public Works, he's really in the forefront of this as far as getting these projects, these CIP projects, not only in time but under budget by, you know, some of the things that he does. You know, Alan, you know, good job on, on, on all these projects.
Well, thank you, guys. Great job.
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, and, and we are, you can see a lot of movement going on in the city, a lot of improvement, and I think that's great. So thank you very much for getting things going. But, you know, right there, I was wondering, you know, we did Hundred Thirty-Ninth and Van Ness all the way down to, I guess almost Redondo Beach to Marine, is it? Are, is, where can we put in improvements for the other direction down on Van Ness, down to El Segundo? Is there a plan for that? Do we have to wait for the next capital improvement or where can we put that part in? Because it looks really good going one way and you go, you go north and it's like, oh, okay, that's where all the homes are in, in the park. And I think it would look really nice. We could add some improvement there as well. Can you, is there any room for there, for that area, that street?
Alan, you have, you want to take that?
Yes, I can, and, and that's a good question. And we have just awarded, it's a very small contract, but we've awarded the design contract for the rest of Van Ness. So you will see that, I'd have to guess, in about a year and a half, that would be the construction.
All right. Thank you very much. And it looks great.
Thank you.
I can hardly wait for the whole thing to come together, because it's, it's long overdue. A lot, a lot of work is long, a lot of improvements are long overdue. And so, thank you, Director Riggs and City Manager and.
Alan, just one quick, quick thing. With, with all the things that we, we do in the streets, I know that PCI right now is eighty-one. You want to talk briefly that after we do some of the things here that the, that we're doing, that PCI is actually going to go up, right?
Yeah, absolutely. So, so one of the things that I, it's a night of giving credit, but the real credit for, for a lot of this is Kevin Quonk, who balances all these funding sources in coordination with Caltrans, City of L.A., County, UPRR, it's, 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 and all the funding sources. It's, it's very complicated, but what, one thing that Kevin did when he came to the city several years ago is he went after a number of grants, and as you saw that, sixteen million dollars in upcoming projects, many of those were, were different grants that he was able to obtain. And those are going to get us ahead of our normal everyday per capita funding sources, our, our gas tax and the like. And so as those come online, it's, it's reasonable to expect that we're going to break eighty-five and actually be into the eighty-six, eighty-seven range. So, so due to the, the hard work of the team several years ago, and, and those projects, why they're taking so long, such as Redondo Beach Boulevard, Vermont, Artesia, is a coordination and, and especially through the pandemic. Trying to work with Caltrans is already difficult. And you put in the pandemic, it's twice as bad. And you get a project on Vermont, and you've got Caltrans and the City of L.A., and it just gets exponentially more difficult to do anything. So those projects are coming, but, but as City Manager indicated, we, our, our outlook is very, very bright for our PCI in the future. It's, it's going to be something very, for us to be very proud of.
You know what? And I, I'm glad, actually, Councilwoman Francis brought this question up as far as like, you know, extending to other streets and so on. Can we explain to the public, since people are listening now, how we go about, you know, like, for instance, we chose from One Thirty-Fifth down to maybe like Redondo Beach Boulevard, but, you know, how we kind of pick, you know, where we're going throughout the city? Like, we'll do so much, you know, maybe from, you know, El Segundo to Rosecrans, and then we'll do so much in Artesia, coming back to Redondo, how we move around, like, maybe we're not doing all of the north side or, you know, all the south side. Can you talk a little bit about how we kind of go around and how we make full circle back?
Absolutely. I'm glad.
Absolutely. I'm glad you brought that up because it's something the public doesn't understand sometimes, which is we do our street repairs, rehab, and maintenance based on our pavement management plan. And we have an outside expert come in. They look at the condition of all the streets. And what they do then is they come up with a plan for us to spend our limited restricted funds, which is all we use on these these projects, very methodically and very smart so that we're getting the most bang for our buck. So for example, if we're going to, if a street is in need of overlay, but it could go two more years under the current condition, then what we'll do is we will go to a street that is in dire need of overlay, that is going to go to a full reconstruction act. So what we try to do is through this program is is to get the most life out of each stage of life of the asphalt so that we spend the money when we really need it and not prematurely. And so it does, it's hard to to explain to the the public sometimes as to why we do hop around and why we'll do a couple blocks section of a local street, but we don't do the next. And and it's it's hard to understand, why don't you just do it? You're out there. But it really helps us use those dollars and get the most out of them. And with any kind of funding, it's limited and and these funds are. And so that's that's why it's a very methodical process for the pavement management plan. And following that plan is one of the reasons that we've ended up with the high PCI that we have and will continue to to even get better in the future.
Okay, thank you. And as soon as we hit the next highest number, please let us know so we can start bragging. So thank you. Thank you for that explanation. I think that was very well said. Mayor Protem, and then we're going to open it up to the public because I know we have a couple of speakers.
Yeah, real quickly, though, you know, along that same line of questioning, Mr. Riggs, can you let everybody know also, you sort of mentioned it about Vermont, where it's Caltrans and City of Los Angeles. But can you also kind of like explaining about how we share with Torrance and some of these other places that our half of the street looks great, the other half of the street's got potholes? Can you kind of explain that to them? Because they always ask me, well, why don't you just do the whole street?
Yeah, absolutely. When you take a look at our city boundary, probably half of the streets where where we have our boundary, there it's on one side of the asphalt or the other. Unfortunately, on the majority of Crenshaw and on virtually all of Vermont, the our boundary is in the middle. And so if you go to Vermont, you can see on our side of the street where we have, we're doing projects, whereas on the other side, it's 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 in disrepair. It's even it's interesting on Vermont that our side of the street is asphalt and the other side is concrete. So there is this significant difference and we can't control them and they can't control our asphalt. We try to do joint projects when it makes sense. But something like like Vermont, yeah, it's it's difficult with the multiple agencies. And we try to do our best. And I love when you come into Gardena from some of these other cities, you can literally feel the fact that you're in Gardena. As it gets smooth and the asphalt, it's 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 a nice feeling, the noise goes down from the roadway. And so you not only can you see the the difference, but you can feel it. But we try our best, but we can only do what we can do within our city boundary.
Okay. Thank you. Madam City Clerk, we have a couple of speakers?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have three speakers.
Okay.
We'll get them on in a minute.
Okay, Ms. Claudia, go ahead.
Hi, how's everyone doing?
Great, thank you.
My first question is, this Rosecrans Community Center, where exactly is that going to be located?
It's going to be at the Old Chase Bank, which is off of Rosecrans and Purdy Avenue.
Okay. And then my next question is, or maybe a concern, is I've noticed that we've invested a large amount of money onto Raleigh Park as far as building the skate park and added that shading, that shading area. But we haven't invested in the playground surfacing, which means that after holidays, on the weekends, when you take your kids to the park and they're playing in that sand, they're they're finding nasty, random things in that old sand, trash.
Okay.
And then they have a metal slide that in the summertime gets really hot, so the kids can't even access it because it's dangerous for them to slide down that hot slide.
Okay. Got you. As far as Raleigh Park's concerned, that shaded area, I believe, is new, if I'm not mistaken. And I thought we didn't have sand anymore. I thought we had a new material. But one of the things I'd like to do i- if possible, Ms. Claudia, is once you get off the call, if you can email our city clerk just your contact information and we'd like to maybe just follow back up with you and we can give you some just some more better updated information as it relates to that. Now, I know as far as the skateboard park, that was a grant we received from one of our supervisors a few years ago. So that wasn't per se Gardena money. I'm going to say Gardena money. It was a grant that came from the county that paid for the two skateboard parks that we have, one which is at Arthur Johnson Park and the other at Raleigh Park. So that was just money that was given to us specifically to build that. But the other questions that you had, I don't have updated information. Like I said, if you email our our city clerk at that's her email, sorry, I usually say this all the time, at at B. Romero at cityofgardena.org, we can follow back up with you and just maybe answer some of these questions for you better.
Okay, thank you, yes, because that skate park definitely brought a lot more traffic than we were used to, which means a lot more trash. And, you know, the the kids don't play in the shaded area because there's enough trees there to get that shade. I feel like that money should have gone towards the equipment.
Okay. And and if I'm not mistaken, there could be an update with equipment and route. I I apologize if I don't have this information for you. But like I said, if we have your contact information, we can email you updates or just give you updated information. So I know that skateboard park is, there are some issues concerned with that. But there again, too, you could always email us and we can do our best we can if we need to clean up the trash. Unfortunately, that, you know, comes along with people just discarding things and so on. So we always welcome comments like that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our next speaker?
Hello?
Hi, Ms. Diggs, go ahead.
Yes. So I'm I'm with Claudia, Ms. Claudia there, you know, because I live closer to Masfukai and I really appreciate the improvements there. And I think I heard the gentleman say that there's still some further improvements. My question is, does the public have an input on the improvements with the remainder of the budget that's left? Can we, you know, like sand, for instance, that needs to go, the resurfacing around the swings needs to be improved. So there's quite a few things that, you know, the public, I wanted to know if we can just have some input.
I believe in the beginning, we had it open to the public, if I'm not mistaken, and that was several months ago. But once again, if you were to email your information, your contact information to our city clerk, there are some things that, for instance, I know that I don't believe we're going to be doing sand anymore. I think there's a new updated
Good.
material park, but but I because you kind of caught me off guard with this, I can't tell you exactly, but we can send you some updates from our Recreation Human Services Department. That way you'll be up to date, know maybe some of the the new things that are going to be coming with the park there as well. And again, we always, you know, open to your suggestions and comments. I don't know if there's still time to make any of those, but, you know, it it doesn't hurt to just let us know. Maybe there's something we didn't think about. Maybe, I I'm not for sure. Again, I don't have all the information as related to that one, but there was an open meeting several months ago regarding.
And you're right about that, Mayor. I, as a matter of fact, I did, and my family did, put some input in on that. I just didn't, I don't know where I can see where the plan is yet.
If you send us your your contact information to our city clerk and just reference this here, then, like I said, then we can follow back up with you and go from there.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, I think, do we have one more speaker, Madam City Clerk?
Yeah, yes, we do.
Go ahead. Okay, Ms. Therese, go ahead. Go ahead, Speaker, Ms. Therese.
Mayor, sir, we have unmuted her and are giving her permission to speak. She's not coming on.
Okay, let's just give her a couple more seconds here. Ms. Therese, if you can hear us, you can go ahead and begin. Okay. So if we have any further discussion or whatever while it's going, I mean, if she happens to click back on, then we can bring it up before we vote. So just, Madam City Clerk, just kind of cut in and let me know if she does reconnect back with us again. So let me go back to council members here. Any more questions or comments anybody has as it relates to this project here? No? Okay. And actually, I take that back. We're actually not voting on this. This is just a receive and file. So if there are no more questions or comments, Madam City Clerk, she didn't come back up again?
No, no matter. No, there she is again.
Okay, let's go ahead and let her speak. Ms. Therese, if you can hear us, you can go ahead and begin. Ms. Therese, if you can hear us, you can go ahead and begin now at this time. Okay, well, I'm going to have to assume that it's probably not working. So. Okay, well, we're going to have to go ahead and move on. So on this particular item, if there are no more questions or comments, we're going to go ahead and receive and file this here. Okay, so let's move on to item number twelve A. Mr. City Manager?
Mayor, sir, the members of the City Council. Agenda item twelve A is Resolution sixty-five seven zero for the development of a one hundred and twenty-one unit, single-room occupancy housing development. Excuse me. With seven affordable units and two six-tier automated parking structures on a one-acre property in M-one industrial zone. On February fifteen, twenty twenty-two, the Planning Commission considered the project and approved Resolution number four twenty-two approving the project. At the council meeting held February twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, the project was called to review. And on March twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, the City Council held a public hearing and voted three to two to direct staff to draft a resolution denying the project. At the direction of the mayor, a second public hearing was noticed for April twelve, twenty twenty-two to consider and receive any additional information and public testimony prior to making a final decision. Staff has prepared a presentation. What's required tonight is to open a public hearing and take additional testimonies from the applicant and the public, close the public hearing and discuss the matter, take one of the following courses of action. Option one is to adopt Resolution number sixty-five seventy, denying the project, or option two, make a motion to rescind the previous action on this matter, denying the project and adopt Resolution number sixty-five seven zero approving the project.
Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead, Amanda?
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. This is Amanda Kunya, project planner for the item under item, Agenda item twelve dash dot A. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. I will be providing a brief presentation for this item. And if you can just let me know if you're able to see my screen with the presentation?
Yes, we are.
Okay, thank you. So to begin, I do want to mention that, yes, as stated on the agenda tonight, this item is being brought back up as a public hearing item. So therefore, I do want to provide a brief overview of the proposed project and the requested entitlements. To begin, some overview of the project site. The project site is located at one-three-one-two-six South Western Avenue. It is at the northeast corner of Western and West one thirty-second Street. It is approximately a one-acre lot, corner lot that is currently developed with a roughly twenty-one hundred square foot convenience store as well as a roughly ten thousand square foot industrial building that's utilized as currently for an automotive repair facility along with a towing company. And lastly, the the site is located in the M-one, that's the industrial zoning district within the city's zoning map. So the the applicant is proposing to demolish all of the existing structures and to develop a four-story multifamily residential building that will contain one hundred and twenty-one single-room occupancy units or SROs. And before you hear is the proposed site planned for the development project. And I just want to go over briefly noting that the the ground floor units or to note that the four-story residential building is located towards the the corner street frontages along West one thirty-second Street and Western Avenue with the ground floor unit stepped back ten feet from the property lines and separated by a landscape buffer. The the building is stepped back on the third and fourth floors that are utilized for communal open space areas, again, located on the southwest corner of the property. Additionally, there are other communal facilities located towards the center of the development with indoor outdoor, or sorry, an outdoor courtyard that provides a pool and spa area, an enclosed fitness room, an indoor recreation area as well. In addition to that, each unit would have a a pad, a private patio or balcony along the along the second, third, and fourth floors. I do also want to note, the proposal does include two six-tier automated parking structures that are located towards the north end of the of the lot. In addition to those parking spaces, eight-covered parking spaces are proposed, including three accessible spaces provided on the ground floor. And briefly, I do want to go over the the entitlements and that are that are requested under this proposal. And so first, the, as the project is located along Western Avenue, the City of Gardena's municipal code calls for a site plan review. And under the site plan review, the following findings are are set to be made. In all, the site plan review shows whether the development is consistent with the intent and purpose of the general plan and the municipal code requirements. And as shown in detail and briefly here in this table, but in more in more detail, the staff report that dated February fifteenth and made part of the City Council packet tonight. The project did meet or exceed all the applicable development standards of the Gardena Municipal Code, including those standards of, again, the M-one zone where the property is located, as well as those specific provisions set forth in the the Gardena Municipal Code for SRO units. So again, as the table shows, you're exceeding the the minimum requirements. And second entitlement requested under this proposal, in accordance with Section eighteen point three six, subsection three zero three zero, subsection P, all single-room occupancies are actually only subject to a conditional use permit in the M-one zone. And again, as stated, this property, just well within And again, as stated, this property is just all within that zoning district. And as mentioned, the project does include an automated parking structure. And in accordance with Chapter 18.40 of the Gardena Municipal Code, is subject to a conditional use permit. And I did briefly want to just show the concept of automated parking structures. So the structure will, again, the two six-tier structures will have the capacity to store 57 vehicles. So for a total of 114 between the two structures. And the parking structures would use a mechanical parking system that would help stack the cars on multiple vertical levels, resulting in maximizing the space of the overall property for parking. And again, do iterate that in addition to the structures, there are eight covered parking spaces on the ground level. Do want to note that staff is asking if the City Council does approve the project tonight, that a additional condition be made part of the overall resolutions and conditions of approval to require that the structure be, to provide screening along the south and west elevations. This was made part of the request when provided to the Planning Commission. However, unfortunately, it seems it was kept out of the conditions that were set forth in tonight's City Council packet. So again, that is a request by staff for an additional condition. And lastly, I want to note that this proposal does include a density bonus request. So as the applicant is providing seven affordable units at very low income, it does, under state density bonus law, the project qualifies for an increase in density. And that density bonus is set forth by a sliding scale based on the percentage of affordable housing and at a specific, or the specific level it's providing. So for this project site, since the project is providing seven units, that's a percentage of 7% of affordable housing, the overall base project, and therefore qualified the project for a 25% increase or a total of 122 units allowed on the project site. And again, this project would be proposing 121 SRO units, therefore compliant with state density bonus law. Under the state law as well, the project does qualify for certain waivers from development standards. And so under the applicant's request, the request to increase, to allow an increase in the FAR requirement of the zoning district is being proposed to allow that 25% increase. So the FAR is being proposed to increase at 25%. And lastly, I do want to note that this project does qualify for one concession, but the applicant did not request one as part of the project. And lastly, I do apologize, staff didn't miss providing this map within the City Council's packet. As mentioned in the staff report, we did mention from the previous City Council meeting, it was asked whether there are other density bonus projects that have been either developed or brought before the City Council. And so this map shows some of the projects that have gone forward for a density bonus, I would say, within the past five years. The subject property being at the top of the city map in Burgundy. The other projects that were recently approved, including the Manetta Point Project, which is Amalia Homes Development, included a total of 84 townhome units, including two low-income units, as well recently approved by the City Council, the Normandy Place Project in Orange, located here, included a total of 30 townhome units with three dedicated for low income. And the Gardena Apartments that was approved, I believe, back in 2018, was the rental apartment development, which included one very low-income unit, and they qualify for a density bonus. There is one additional density bonus project that is pending and is under planning review at this time. And it is located along Marine Avenue. And that one is proposing a total of 22 townhome units with two units at low income. So that concludes staff's presentation of the overall project. So at this time, staff does recommend that the City Council open the public hearing, take any additional testimony from the applicant and the public, close the public hearing and discuss the matter further, and take one of the following actions, with that being either to adopt the Resolution 6570, denying the project, or to make an motion to rescind the previous action of the past City Council meeting and approving the project under the same resolution number. So at this time, staff is available for any questions that the City Council may have, as well as the applicant is present.
Madam Mayor, I also want to add in that our environmental consultant who prepared the categorical exemption report is also available to answer any questions, because I believe there were some questions raised at the last meeting regarding traffic.
Is that Ms. Garcia? Rita Garcia?
Yes, it is.
Okay, got it. Okay, thank you. So at this time, let me go ahead and open the public hearing. And let me let the applicant speak, and then I'm gonna open it up to the community at this time. So the hearing is now open. If we have the applicant on with us?
I believe he was just moved over to panelists.
Oh, okay. All right. Mr. Johnson, if you're there, you can go ahead and...
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you very clearly.
A couple of things I wanted to mention that I think were very important is the code comparison that Amanda brought up. As far as the minimum code or even code standards, we exceed them or go to the maximum we can as far as unit sizes, open space, we exceed the open space. We do not have shared facilities like bathrooms or kitchens. Everyone has their own independent use of their space. We also have the parking structure, which allows, you know, per code, one car per unit, which is what we are supplying. I bring this up really because being in the housing industry, I mean, my family's been in development. My grandfather was in development. I really understand, and I think our company really understands, what attracts the most reliable tenant. Now, everyone always asks, or I should say, people ask, you know, what kind of people are gonna live there? And our goal is to attract the most reliable tenant that we possibly can. And reliable really infers a tenant that will pay the rent, a tenant that will respect the property, and a tenant that will respect the other people that they live with. That's really the best tenant you could possibly have. And in order to attract the best tenants possible, you have to have the amenities and the facilities that people are looking for. And you cannot just build something and they'll show up. That's kind of old school. You really need to make it where it's an amenity-rich experience. So people are coming there and they're feeling like they're on vacation in a sense. You know, they're going to a rooftop, they're going to a courtyard, they're going to a pool instead of a, you know, that's just for the community itself that's there. It's not, they have to go somewhere else. They're going to the gym within the building. They're not going to a gym off-site. So we try to make it a one-stop experience for people, and I think we do accomplish that. I think that the parking facilities was brought up. You know, as a concession, we are allowed to ask for the parking facilities to not be part of a CEP. And I think that we're, you know, down that road, I guess, at this point. Where, you know, that's kind of a, you know, idea that we're tossing back and forth. I haven't spoken to Amanda about that yet, but, you know, I think that we have the parking that's needed for the property itself from our experience. And not to mention, our property on Western is within the newly adopted overlay zone, which calls out our specific lot as being approved for residential use. And there's no other residential use that's identified in the overlay on our whole block, let alone the block south of us. So really, if there is any overflow of cars, which we don't anticipate even filling up the parking structure we have, there is no one in that whole industrial zone that is really there after 5 o'clock at night. So I really don't see there being too much of an issue there. As far as, you know, types of rental rates that we are anticipating getting, we just don't make those up. We have extensive research that's done. We have a comparative market analysis and assessment that was done by a company called RCLCO, which was prepared prior to the beginning of the 16819 Normandy Project, which calls out the rents in 2020, mid-2020, to be roughly about $1,600 a month. We subsequently had an appraisal done for our new project on 139th, which is the north side of Gardena and Normandy. That's a 20-unit project. We have a recent appraisal that was done two months ago by Colliers International for the construction loan. And they call out our rents to be $1,800 a month on 139th. So these are all done by third-party companies that are hired. We're not just doing our, I mean, we do our own analysis as well. But we love that, you know, they see what we see. They're pulling the comps we see. And we're not allowed to, you know, sway them, you know, with what they feel the market is. The banks are really on that, that you can't even speak with appraisers. So we feel very confident that we're gonna reach our necessary, you know, numbers or needed numbers, which is, you know, our break evens are very low, actually. So we're gonna exceed our necessary numbers. But as far as what we're gonna attract is, again, the most reliable tenant we possibly can for the area, which is gonna pull from outside the area. Most of our people that we're looking for as far as tenant base is typically young professionals, people that work at SpaceX. We tend to have workforce housing a little bit. We tend to have students from El Camino College that we have a past, I guess, affiliation with or past dealings with. Dominguez Hills, we actually weren't speaking with them as far as for student housing. And then we have the LA Southwest College, which is just north of Western, of the 105. So we're planning on really getting in touch with all of those schools as well. As far as for the affordable units, it seems like we do get a lot of, we do get a lot of seniors. So we are gonna target seniors for the affordable units, which are the very low units. As far as what's there on the site now, I think it's important to point out, it's not just a convenience store. It's kind of like a liquor store. And primarily, people that are going in and out of there are buying beer and liquor and cigarettes. And, you know, that kind of is, I think everyone would be happy that we're getting rid of, you know, that type of store in the area. As far as, I know Councilwoman, Councilmember Frances brought up in one of the meetings, and I think one of the environmental justice meetings that I watched, about food stores. And really, food stores do not show up, and then housing comes. It's kind of the opposite way around. In order for us to attract food stores, we have to have the housing there. So we are in conversations with different owners that are near the Western project to see if we can work out deals with them to buy their property. We are trying to figure out ways to bring food stores in on the north side of town, which I see in the environmental justice cheat sheet in a sense, that there's really nothing north of Marine on that side of town. And I think that that's a really interesting idea for us to go after while we're building housing, is to really exploit that in a sense of getting a really good, maybe organic grocery store there, like a Sprouts or something like that, which I think is really needed for the area, or even a Trader Joe's, I think, would really love the area over there. So, you know, I appreciate all the comments and questions. I think we are doing our best to be good citizens within the city. And I think we're, we want to stay in the city, and I think we're here to figure out how to move forward.
Okay, thank you. Let me open it up to, Madam City Clerk, do we have anybody from the public wishing to speak at this time?
Yes, we do, Madam Mayor. We have four speakers from the public.
Okay, go ahead.
So we'll start them.
Okay.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, first of all, I have a couple of concerns, suggestions, and questions. Number one, I know I only get three minutes, but I feel like this developer definitely should have came in with an apology, first of all, for the last reaction to the last meeting and how he came not only at the City Council, but at the way we were feeling about the situation. Number two, I feel like talking to our neighbors, which are elderly people. I feel like the city is not doing enough to communicate what is going on. And these elderly people don't know what's going on realistically, because they don't have access to social media. They're not online. If it wasn't for us spreading the word, they wouldn't know that what the development was going to be. What else do I have on here? Another concern that I have with the mayor was that her concern was the color of the building. And I felt like that was her only concern. So given this, I'm still against it. Again, it's not just the traffic, but it's a criminal activity that's also been going on. And I feel like that Gardena deserves a lot better.
Any more? Claudia, are you still?
That was it?
Okay, thank you. Okay, our next speaker? Go ahead, you can start speaking.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. I just want to say, first off, thank you to the council members from the last meeting that we reviewed this, that did, you know, cast their vote to deny this project. I live very close to this area, and when I heard about this development, I was very concerned. I have a family that I have here, that I'm trying to raise here and keep here. I was born and raised in Gardena, and I do want to see this city flourish. I have been part of a development coming on with living by the Normandy Casino and seeing what happens when you buy a property, build more of this development. And it did not do anything good for the area that I lived in there. I still stay in Gardena. I live right next to this area. So I'm very concerned with this. The people that I spoke to around my neighborhood had no idea this was going on. And when I did advise them of what was going on, no one really had anything good to say about it or was accepting of this and did not want to see it happen. I see there's a lot of development happening in Gardena to get this city, you know, on the map. And I don't think this development will do that. There's already enough apartments along El Segundo between Western and Crenshaw. It's full of apartments. I see that traffic there. It's not good. So I don't think this development and the parking that they're suggesting is really gonna do anything to avoid that. So I really do hope that we do kind of stay on the same track with the city council, that this, this development is just not what Gardena needs. This area of Gardena, I don't see a lot of recreational development. I do, did hear that the Rosecrans Center, I believe it was called, is going to be developed close, community center will be developed closer to here, that's good, but packing in more single-unit housing, I don't think is going to enhance this area at all, regardless of what you think you're going to be able to charge. I don't believe that this area will be able to, people will be able to, or be willing to pay that cost. And then when they're not willing to pay that cost, the rent is just going to go lower and lower until they can pack whoever they can pack in there, and it's not going to be the working professionals that they think they're going to have. Yeah, you know, their assessors might go out and say that, but that might not be reality. So I'd rather see more different development happening towards the community than just sticking a bunch of people in a dense, very dense area. And the other, um, projects that they showed, those units were 20 units, 50 units, 84 units, we're talking 121 units here. Again, just in my heart, just not a good idea for this area. Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, our next speaker?
Hi, it's me again, I'm so sorry, but I have a lot of questions, I'm an inquisitive person. My question is, how do you, if you are a senior or you're, you're a low-income person, how do you get on to, with these developments to perhaps apply for these places?
Okay, you know what, because you only have three minutes, if you could just go through the list of questions you have, and then I'll have somebody respond to those, I just don't want to use up all your time.
Hey, all right.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Was that the only question you had, or?
Oh, no, the other, well, my concern is, I'm, I'm torn between the way the developer just, uh, just laid that out, you know, it's like they're trying to attract a, a different sort of people that are, that are from the outside and not from people that are from the inside. So how is the city council working on just maybe current residents that maybe want to downsize or something? Why, why are we trying to get SpaceX and all these other people in here, which is good, I don't, I'm not trying to say that's bad, but there are people here in this community that may want to, you know, downsize or sell their house, or, you know, I, I have an issue with that.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay, just those two questions there?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, and I'll, I'll make sure once we go full circle back around to the developer, they'll answer some of those questions there.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, do we have any other speakers? I'm sorry, you're muted?
I'm sorry, we have, uh, one, two, three, four more speakers.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, yes, hi, good afternoon, City Council and City Mayor. So with regards to this project, um, it's, it's not the best choice, uh, it's way too many units and such a densely populated, um, you know, it's, it's already densely populated, you're sticking more housing there. The square footage is very alarming, it's very low, it's like, like a bird in a pigeon nest, you know, so it's, it's, doesn't make sense. I don't believe anyone that's making 160 to 200,000 dollars at, at these big companies are going to, are going to live in a, it's like a two-story, like a two parking, uh, parking, it's the size of two-car parking, um, spaces. I don't think someone making that much money is going to, you know, live there. We should be restricting, if, if there are developments of this nature, it should be restricted only to 55 and plus, um, senior housing, that, that potentially could make some sense there. The parking ratio is, uh, very low, um, you have to consider guests, uh, visiting, um, you know, people visiting, um, you're going to have food trucks like, um, Amazon or, you know, FedEx, Uber Eats, they're going to be delivering food or packages where they're going to park, uh, and the biggest thing is guests, so we need to increase that ratio at least to 1.2. I would deny the density, density entitlements. And then the biggest concern is, is this parking free? Because I know developers, oh, uh, it's $40, $50 for a parking spot, so that's going to be the next one. And then handicap parking, uh, handicap accessible parking, um, how much is, how many parking spots are there? We should have at least eight or nine, um, based on this specific, uh, you know, development size. The city needs to add a $25,000 recreation fee per unit. Other cities in Orange County are doing this, um, you know, that, this would be very, that's why they have all those parks, if you think about Orange County, uh, there are some cities that have parks every three blocks, and you're thinking, how do they do it? It's because they're charging a recreation fee. Also mandated, mandating a 24-hour security guard. Also, um, the, I believe the police department has a security camera, the 25,000-hour security camera, 12,000-hour camera, installing that. I would honestly deny this, this is way too many units. If it was half the units and the, the square footage was double, uh, it would make sense, so that's all, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Madam City Clerk, do we have any other speakers?
Yes, we have another speaker. We have a couple more, actually.
Okay, that's fine.
Good evening, council members. I am concerned with, uh, like the other speakers said, the number of units, and I would really like for the developer to explain why he's putting so many units on the north end out of the four projects. This project is the most dense project that they're putting up and on the north end of town. I would also like for the city council to change, go back and change the minimum requirement from 350 back to at least 500, and maybe require the future developers to, um, add a personal outdoor space, maybe a balcony. Three to, three to 500 square feet is not a lot of living space, and like they're saying, anybody that's making that kind of money to pay that type of rent, I can't see them staying there for long. But I would really, truly, um, appreciate if the council would go back and review some of the things that they've put out there in the building codes that allow these type of developments, so that we don't have these type of developments popping up all over our city. Like the other caller said, we are a unique city, and it's been said so many times. So to bring in people from the outside versus certain of people that's already here, we don't know what the city might turn into. So, I mean, I would really like for the city to go back and review the housing element and the building codes and the minimum requirements, and fix it so that we don't have developers with Gardena with big eyes to put in these type of developments throughout our city. Out of four projects, he put 122 in the north side of town, that's questionable.
Okay, thank you. Madam City Clerk, do we have any more speakers?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we do.
Okay, go ahead. Ms. Sharice, uh, if you can hear us, you can go ahead and begin speaking. You can go ahead and begin now. Madam City Clerk, let's go to the next speaker, and then, um, we'll try to come back to Ms. Sharice.
Madam Mayor, it looks, it appears that she is on here twice, and that's why two showed up, so seems that she had that situation earlier. Don't know.
Okay.
Okay, there we go. We got you now.
Okay, I was on my, good evening to everybody, I was on my phone and my computer because you guys couldn't hear me, but my main concern is the same as last city council meeting. What, I know the developer, he has a strong opinion of who's going to live there, but like I said, I'm in the area, and I'm just very concerned with the, um, the type of environment of the people that's going to be coming in for 350 square feet, and also the parking. We have a serious parking on St. Andrews as we speak right now. And we've called a number of times, a number of times, and still to no prevail. We have somebody on our street that literally owns 20 cars and takes up all the residential parking on our street, and we've called and nobody seems to be able to do anything. And now they're going to bring in a, 121-unit building? Where do they think these people are going to park? Where do they think these people are going to park? And I don't believe he will be able to get the rent that he wants, because if somebody's making that type of money, they're going to just basically buy one of the townhouses and the homes that you're putting in Gardena. So who, if he doesn't get the renters that he's asking for, I don't know, I'm just thinking, can he get a, a contract with the state of California and to start housing homeless people there?
No, 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 that's not going to happen, but go ahead.
Okay, I'm just asking, because it's happened other places, where they can't get the rent, and they figure out some kind of way to get renters in there, and it's not the type of people that they wanted. I'm still against the project.
Okay.
Totally against it.
Ms. Sharice, before you hang up, um, if, if you can, I would like for you to go on the City of Gardena, our police website, and reach out to, uh, I think in your area you have Lieutenant Cuff, who is in charge of your area, and so he can help you deal with that long-term issue of the person with 20 cars, because that's a completely separate issue, but I, I want you to know, we hear you, what you're saying, and I can imagine that's a quality of life issue, so reach out to Lieutenant Cuff and, um, um, he will get back with you, I guarantee you, our chief of police is listening to this meeting right now, and if Lieutenant doesn't, the chief of police will, because that's a big deal, and I can understand how frustrating that can be. We're going to continue on with the meeting, but that, because that is a separate issue, and I can understand it's very frustrating, uh, if you go back on our City of Gardena, our police department website, our Gardena PD, and, uh, look up, um, lieutenants, and I can tell you it's Lieutenant Cuff, and, um, you know, reach out, and, um, we can follow back up with you on that, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Madam City Clerk?
Madam Mayor, we have no further, no other speakers.
Okay.
That concludes our.
Okay, before we close this hearing, since we have the applicant on, um, I would just like, there's, I took some notes here real quickly, and Mr. Johnson, if you're just open to this, um, I just really quickly, I just have a couple of quick questions I'd just like to ask you before I close it, based on what some of the, uh, the speakers asked. For instance, um, some of the questions were, um, um, let me go back to this here. How, how are, how would people apply for the low-income, um, housing, like if a senior or somebody wants to apply for it, how would they do that?
Uh, well, our property management company is going to start marketing shortly and putting up some banners, uh, for instance, on Normandy, and we're going to do the same thing for Western. When it gets, uh, under construction, we'll start having an interest list generated as it gets closer towards completion, uh, and then notify anyone in the area, outside the area, it doesn't matter who, if you live in the community and you want to live in our project and you qualify for, you know, through the application process, that, that is perfectly fine.
So there'll even be a telephone number on the front of the development, my understanding correct?
I'm sorry, there'll be a telephone number, a website, yes, everything.
On front of the, of the development, is that correct?
Yeah, as it gets closer to being completed, so it's not going to be there when it's just under construction, as it's, as it's closer, uh, we will have something there, and we could actually bring them to another project too, so they could see what the amenities would look like in another project, so, uh, they're not just waiting for it to be completed 100%.
Okay, and are you charging for your parking spots, like a separate fee?
You know, a, as far as for charging, I mean, it, it, it's always been a toss-up, right? It's kind of unfair if we have students there that we're making them pay for parking, you know, if they don't even have a car. So we kind of, you know, and if somebody doesn't have a car and somebody has, you know, one car or two cars and we have that extra spot, then we should allow them to park in the parking lot. So I think the goal is to, you know, if, everyone gets one parking spot per unit unless they have no car, if they have no car, then we, what are we going to do with that spot? We're not just going to give it to somebody else, we're going to lease it out to somebody within the building.
Okay, and how many of the parking spots are, like, handicap spots there on this particular project?
I believe there's three handicap spaces, which is, which is what's required.
And can you tell me how many of the units are ADA compliant?
Uh, that's a great question, all of the units are ADA adaptable, so it's, you know, that's one thing also that I never understood is, you can't just say, hey, this is the only unit you can live in, we like that you can pretty much pick any unit you want and we'll adapt it for you.
Okay, and based on the experience from some of your other projects that you've built, how confident do you feel that you can get this amount of rent here? And, uh, as far as whoever you're marketing to, whether it's the young professionals, people within the community, based on your other projects that you've been successful with?
Uh, we're very confident, and, and our third-party, like I said, third-party people that we hire, as we're doing our market research, we hire third-party companies, and we see what they come up with, and they're independent from us, and they also support the same values. Now, if COVID hits again, you know, does that mean that we're going to have, you'll keep seeing increases? No, we might see the 1800, that 139th says we're going to receive two years from now, because maybe there's a little stagnation in the marketplace, but, you know, I feel very confident that we're going to hit our numbers.
Okay, and as far as like the number of units here, this property here, which is considered on the north side, 122 units, the project, um, that you have on 169th? How many units is that one there?
Uh, that one, 63 units, a smaller lot.
It's because it was a smaller lot?
Yes.
And only because this was a larger lot, you were able to get more on this one?
That's correct.
And as far as other projects, I mean, you base it, base off the lot size that you're able to purchase, is that my understanding or no?
That's correct, I mean, the 20 units really, we wouldn't do another 20-unit project again, it doesn't make sense, uh, with the, with the cost of construction right now.
Okay.
So we're really a larger project, you could spread that cost of construction out over more units, which makes more sense to build them, and then also include the affordable.
Okay, got it, okay. So I, thank you for, for answering those, I just wanted to address some of those questions, um, that stood out that, um, people called in for. At this time, I'm going to close the hearing, and then I'm going to open it up to council questions or comments here, so, uh, the hearing is officially closed, and, uh, council members, do you guys have any questions or comments? Councilmember Cascano, let's start with you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question is to Mr. Kragdichiuchi, uh, when did we adopt the, the SROs in the city of Gardena?
Uh, that's been in effect since, uh, sometime in 2012, where we adopted that into our municipal code.
Well, since, since 2012, we adopted it, and we said the, the, the square footage of the thing is to be minimum 350?
Uh, that would be the maximum size, so this developer is billing the, uh, largest size SRO that we allow by our code.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Councilwoman Frances, if so, you're muted.
I just had a point of clarification, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Johnson, my, uh, comment, uh, regarding food stores had, had to do with our discussion on food scarcity as a factor that, um, that, uh, identified disadvantaged communities. It had nothing to do with, uh, that was, that was sole purpose that my comments regarding that discussion had to do with food scarcity in terms of identifying disadvantaged community. So, but, uh, thank you for listening, anyway.
Okay. Any more questions or comments? So I, I, I have a concern, um, if we're going to move forward with this project, I want to know that, um, will we still be able to get the blue color versus the orange? I wanna know that, um, will we still be able to get the blue color versus the orange color? Because that's still really important to me, um, seeing that.
It's in the resolution of, the proposed resolution of approval has that as a condition, Madam Mayor.
Okay, s- um, i- if, if the project is approved?
If the project is approved, on the proposed resolution of approval, the blue color was included in there as a condition.
Okay, any other questions or comments? No, well, um, I did have the opportunity to take a look at the project on one sixty-ninth. Um, I kind of had an idea, you know, what four hundred square foot looks like, you know, the size of a garage, but I want to get a better idea of what three fifty would look like. And, um, it's only a fourth less, but just kind of seeing how it was configured, and I was really impressed, really, really impressed, um, uh, just with the layout there and, uh, as well as the amenities, you know? I, I, I was so, when I saw the dishwasher and the washing machine, I thought that was pretty nice to, to have that. And I, interestingly enough, I don't know if I mentioned this last time, I was asking one of my younger sisters about a project like this, and she said, if my apartment had a washing machine and dryer, she said, you would never see me. And I thought, wow, this is kind of interesting that, uh, you know, I mean, that was a bit, that's a big deal for, uh, for, uh, for people, you know, if you can have your own private washing machine. But, um, I was really impressed with the size of the bathroom. Uh, it's probably larger than my own bathroom at home, I, I thought it was really nice, so. Um, all the high-tech, uh, type of amenities that they had as far as the keyless door entries, um, air conditioning, um, with the project, um, balconies, I was very impressed. And even just looking at the, the, uh, outdoor, I guess you call it communal area, I call it common space area, that, uh, that was had on the roof, very impressive with that, um, just the amount of money that was put into a project like this. What I saw on the one sixty-sixth, one sixty-ninth location, um, this one here looks like it's gonna be even better because it has a pool and a spa and, uh, a fitness center. So I don't know what more you can ask for. I mean, if I were staying in it, it does look like it would be an experience, kind of like a hotel, uh, a very high-end hotel. So I do know there are people out there paying, you know, these amounts because just some of our single-family residents that are renting in my tract, and where I live is right down the street from there, thirty-five, thirty-seven, and as much as forty-three hundred dollars just to rent a house, um, with a front and backyard and a two-car garage. So, I mean, that's what these rents are, and we're starting to see a lot of people move into Gardena because it is still considered affordable. So, um, this here does appeal to somebody else, whether it's a senior or somebody deciding to downsize, or maybe it's somebody who's out of college and they work a lot, so, um, you know, just different people have different needs, so. Um, something a little different, and, uh, I, I was, I was quite impressed with this. I guess the one thing I look at, the fact that if Gardena moves forward with a project, not if, but the project like one sixty-ninth and one like this here, um, we're giving our residents options here, you know, whether you choose to live in a single-family residence, whether you wanna live, um, in a microunit like this one here, um, or even the project like was being considered on Elsie Gondon Crenshaw. I mean, we're not losing some of our younger, uh, millennials to other cities like Torrance or Santa Monica. We can offer that to them here in Gardena, so it's a little bit of everything. So, um, that's why I'm, I'm even open to this particular project, and we'll see, um, over the, the next year or so, how well these projects do, you know, as we're moving forward. So that's all I have to say to that, but I, I do appreciate the fact the developer, uh, did open it up to the community to come take a look at and, uh, see what they thought of the property there, so. That's that. So there are no more questions or comments, um, let's go ahead and take a motion. Uh, before we get to that, I would like to make sure everybody is very clear in how these two motions are. Um, the first motion we have is option number one, which is adopting Resolution sixty-five seventy, which denies the project. So option number one, if you deny it, that means it's straight out no, the project then goes away. If option two is, a motion is made to rescind our previous decision on the matter that denied the project from the previous hearing, and we use the same resolution number sixty-five seventy to approve this project now. So option number two means yes, okay? So is anybody, is everybody clear with that?
And Madam Mayor. We would add to option two the additional condition that was mentioned where we're asking for the screening of the parking structure. We'd like, if motion, if option two is chosen, that that additional condition be made as well.
Okay, additional condition?
Of screening of the parking structure.
Of screening, and you said already, the blue color is already in there?
That is already in there.
Okay.
And, and Madam Mayor, um, my question, this is Amanda, I do want to clarify in regards to the condition, the added condition, uh, it should be stated that, um, the added condition be that the applicant shall provide screening on the two automated parking structures along all sides that are visible from the public right-of-way.
I'm sorry, two automatic?
Uh, two automatic parking structures along all sides that are visible from the public right-of-way. So the screening provided on those sides.
On all sides, on all sides, okay. Okay, um, Lisa, was there something you wanted to mention as well? I'm sorry.
I, I was gonna say the same thing as Carmen, please make sure you get the added condition in.
Okay, uh, so let me go back, does everybody understand option one and two? Any questions before we move forward with that? No, okay. Um, okay, so at this time, um, option number one, um, is there a motion to, uh, adopt Resolution number sixty-five seventy, denying the project? Is there a motion? No, okay. Let's move on to option number two. Um, is there a motion to rescind the previous action on this matter, denying the project and then adopting Resolution number sixty-five seventy, approving the project with the added conditions of screening on the automatic parking structure on all sides?
I'm moved.
Okay, hold on one second. Okay, a motion's been made by Mayor Pro Tem Tanaka, is there a second?
Madam Mayor, due to state mandate, I would like to rescind my decision and vote second on this one, yes.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, a motion's been made by Mayor Pro Tem Tanaka and a second by Councilmember Cascanian, will you call the roll?
Mayor Pro Tem Tanaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Cascanian.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
You know what, be- before I vote, I had to... Madam Mayor, you made me think of something that, and I thought about it and that, and I still feel how I feel about the project, I don't think, though, we're gonna get the rents and everything and all that, but from a pragmatic point of view, we go to court, we'll lose, we still get to build it, and then we lose our money, and I'd rather spend our money on our capital improvement project, so I'm a reluctant, uh, yeah.
Okay.
Councilmember, uh, Francis? No.
Okay.
Mayor Serta?
Yes. Okay. All right, well, the matter has been approved at this time. Okay, so, um, is there, because this is a little different, Carmen, the fact we're rescinding and, uh, now making a motion, is there anything additional we need to do with this here?
No, Madam Mayor, you have made the motion to rescind and the motion to adopt Resolution sixty-five seventy to approve the project with the additional conditions. The item is now complete.
Okay, it's, all right, okay, thank you very much. And next, we're gonna move on to departmental item, uh, thirteen A, uh, which is a COVID nineteen update. Mr. City Manager?
Mayor Serta, members of the City Council, for the COVID nineteen update, um, total case count for COVID nineteen is sixteen thousand two hundred and twenty-two. That's as of, uh, today, uh, the twelfth of April, twenty twenty-two. Total death count is at two hundred and sixty-six. That is up five from the last time I reported, unfortunately. The total vaccination, uh, counts, uh, in the, uh, children five to eleven is, uh, thirty-one point eight percent. Ages twelve and above is eighty-eight point one percent. Uh, the youth category from twelve to seventeen is at eighty point seven percent. And our seniors sixty-five and over is at ninety-five percent. Uh, COVID nineteen testing, uh, at Raleigh Park continues. Uh, total residents tested there is six thousand one hundred and eighty-two from the time they started. Uh, and, uh, we are up one hundred and fifty tests since the last council meeting. Mayor Serta, so ends my COVID nineteen report.
Does anybody have any questions for the City Managers in relation to the COVID nineteen report? Councilwoman Francis?
Uh, just a, a couple of questions, what are the hours for the COVID testings? That's right there, Raleigh Park, right in the front, is that correct? And what is that?
I don't have the hours with me currently, um.
The line of security nine to, it was like nine to four, or nine to five?
Yeah, it's something like nine, nine to four, four-thirty, I'm not, I don't have the exact hours. I don't want, you know, don't wanna, uh, give the wrong information, uh, the residents would, uh, get the wrong information. But I could, um, follow up on that, uh, hopefully I can get that answer, um, during my remarks, uh, uh, City Manager remarks.
Okay, and they, they do all the tests, including the one for antibody?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, um, we have a, I think a question from the public.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have a hand up.
Go ahead.
Hello?
Yes, hi, go ahead.
Hi, yeah, um, I just wanted to speak on basically the last motion to approve the development.
Sir, sir, sir? Hello, sir?
I will be leaving the city of Gardena.
Hello, sir?
Appreciate the time.
Okay, well, just so anybody knows, moving forward in the future, you can only speak on a specific item, so if it's something COVID-related, um, like, like if a person wanted to ask a question related to COVID, that's what we're allowing this time, so.
Madam Mayor, don't they supposed to speak during the public hearing only?
They should have only been able to speak, that one accidentally slipped through. Um, it's kind of hard with Zoom here, um, you know, it, it's a little difficult with Zoom, and we try to give everybody ample opportunity to speak when we get on a, a specific subject matter, but we can't always screen everybody. And unfortunately, if somebody says they have a question about COVID and then start talking about something else, it can just happen, so, so, yeah. Okay, um, no questions about COVID, let's move on, item number fifteen A. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor Serta, members of the City Council, agenda item fifteen A is to approve and authorize Director of Public Works to execute an authorization for crossing improvements between the City of Gardena and Union Pacific Railroad, uh, also known as UPRR, for the Artesia Boulevard Improvement Project Num- Job Number Nine Thirty-Five. The Artesia Boulevard and arterial, arterial improvement from Western Avenue to Vermont Avenue project scope consists of up, uh, upgrading traffic signals, pavement rehab, extending left-turn lanes, improving concrete walkways, curb ramps, medians, and landscapes. The final design and impending railroad scope and landscape improvements in this project is financed through the, uh, the MTA Measure R Highway Program and is supplemented by Prop C. Within the project limits, west of Normandy Avenue, there is an active railroad crossing on Artesia Boulevard that is owned and operated by UPRR. There is sixty feet of pavement along Artesia Boulevard that is traveling the railroad track and is severely deteriorated and breaking apart. Part of the project scope is to, to rehab the asphalt pavement. After extensive coordination effort, UPRR agreed to improve the railroad cross- crossing using more durable standard concrete panels that can extend two to four times the lifespan of asphalt. They will share the cost of construction per their proposed agreement. The subject Authorization for Crossing Improvement enumerates each party's scope, construction responsibilities, and share of the cost. The estimated total cost to improve the railroad crossing is two hundred and thirty-nine thousand three sixty-two. UPRR will pay fifty percent, which is one hundred and nineteen thousand six eighty-one. The goal of the project is to complete the design phase, procure a contractor by fall of twenty twenty-two, and start construction in summer twenty twenty-three. The delayed, the delayed start is necessary to secure a long lead time to obtain traffic materials and have UPRR complete the railroad rehab prior to starting the city project scope, including asphalt repaving. The construction traffic control will be high priority and staff plans to minimize the impact by having partial lane closure during regular working hours and a full closure only during weekends and or overnights. Uh, financial impact, approved budget amount for job number nine thirty-five is two million five twenty-three, five hundred and twenty-three thousand from, uh, Measure R Highway and job number nine thirty-five, six hundred and fifty thousand from Prop C. What is required is to authorize a Director of Public Works to execute an, an authorization for crossing improvements with UPRR.
Okay, um, are there any questions or comments? Uh, Councilmember Cascanian?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, my question is to Mr. Rig. Once they do this, once the project starts, how much is gonna affect the traffic on ma- major artery to the city of Artesia Boulevard?
Uh, that's a good question, it's a tough street to build on, and as the City Manager indicated, construction hours are going to be limited in order to try to avoid the, the highest travel times. And there will be night work on the project, can't do everything at night. Uh, but we're gonna definitely hold the contractor to a very strict schedule to, to minimize the disruptions.
So it's gonna be after the busy traffic and at nighttime only? And it's not gonna disturb all residents, right, with the noise and the jackhammer and everything?
Uh, I can't promise that, there, there will be some disruptions, though the low-impact work will be done during the day, uh, trying to avoid the high-traffic times. But, but some of the work will impact, have some minor impacts. The major impacts will be done off-hours, uh, at night and weekends.
Thank you.
Okay, any more questions or comments?
I already know the answer to the question, but why can't they fix the railroad tracks by the lumberyard?
Uh, I think that, you know, it was interesting, we, we went through the project and it's expressed in, in the memo, we, we had an agreement to, on our own dime, to pave asphalt there and at the last second during construction, their inspector made a different decision. So I think what, what's important for them here is this is a much more heavily-traveled railroad with the, with the Western just being a spur. But, uh, we are using our relationship that we've been able to, to forge on this project and to try to dovetail it and to continue to eventually get Western at least fixed with asphalt, if not concrete. So, uh, Western, the UPRR issue is, is ongoing, and we will get there.
Thanks, Mr. Rig. Thank you.
Okay, I have a question, because maybe I'm a little confused with this here. So this project here, um, the money that is being budgeted, is it our Measure R money and Prop C money that we're pulling this from? Or is it the railroad's Measure R and Prop C? I mean, it's part of their budget that they're pulling from, I, I'm just not quite clear.
I don't know where they're getting their money from.
Okay.
But it's our, uh, R and C money that we're using, so.
It's our Prop C and, okay, so like fixing the railroad, why aren't they covering the whole cost of this? Because isn't this their issue? I hate to use it like that, but it's their railroad they need to fix up and so on, correct?
Well, working with UPRR is always a very interesting dilemma.
Okay.
Challenge, and the, the shared responsibility there, they would like to improve it to concrete, which we would like to also, because it's better for our traveling on our road and it's better for their traveling across our road. So it is a joint benefit, um, and so if we, if we said no, I think we would end up having no improvements in, on the asphalt and they could just leave it the way that it is and we can't do anything there, so.
Okay.
We're, we're held a little bit hostage on this, and I think that it's a very fair solution. Um, and that we're both, it's a joint benefit, uh, and it's a joint cost.
Okay. All right, um, Madam City Clerk, uh, we have a hand up?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we do, we have one member of the public that wishes to speak.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Oh, yes, hi, uh, good afternoon, uh, City Council. Um, so I was wondering if, um, the, this can be also be implemented or, you know, being a priority. Vermont Avenue and Gardena Boulevard, it's so bad when you're, if you're, if you ever drive on Vermont, you, you, you pray you don't, you don't, you don't exit accidentally, uh, you know, and you're driving on the road. It's, it's so bad that your car will move left to right, it, it could even be a hazard, I believe. Um, so I think the next part, after this, this is excellent, uh, after this, we should most likely focus towards Gardena and Vermont Boulevard, so Guardian Boulevard and Vermont Avenue. And then it's the whole area. So Guardian Boulevard and Vermont Avenue, and then it's the whole area from Ver- uh Vermont Avenue from R B B, so from Redon Beach Boulevard through Gardena Boulevard, um, that this, there's like a green, supposed to be a green center median, you know, it looks like that. Um, it has trees and, um, so I would say even focusing on that, uh, there there are some, uh, it's like a driveway, I forgot what street it is. It's where you, they have like, like this traffic, uh, it's like some sort of thing in the ground, it's like yellow cones or something. Um, so e- even, you know, you know, getting rid of that and putting, you know, trees or grass or, it looks really bad. Um, and then also something I was considering, and this is just something I would recommend, is putting, um, and this would be eventually the the plan long-term, um, cameras, um, connected to R C C. Um, so if, worst-case scenario, if there were a derailment or even an accident, um, R C C is, you know, able to appropriately dispatch, um, correct, you know, amount of resources uh to the train tracks. Um, so I would, even the best thing is Google. Uh, Google has a camera. It's ve- very cheap. It's only two hundred dollars. It's streamed at four K. So even putting some of those with like a network card, a team over Verizon, and you essentially have something that's recording twenty-four seven. Um, and uh, so that's what I would be recommending. And also, the the crossing pillars that, you know, come down when the red lights uh turn on, um, you know, making sure those are new. And then also some of these new electric cars, like, for example, Tesla has LiDAR and, you know, new uh technologies on their vehicles. Um, our streetlights, they should have a orange color rectangular triangle on there. I I'll email city council what I'm talking about. Um, essentially, it allows these cars to recognize or see the 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 streetlight. Um, so at this project, I would even recommend the one at Artesian Vermont, um, to implement that, and then eventually implementing that through the city. So, yes, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, are the, um, Minister Clerk, do you have any other hands up?
No, we do not, Madam Mayor.
Okay, are there any other questions or concerns? No? Okay, that being said, um, can I get a motion to authorize, uh, to get authorization for the crossing improvement with U P R?
No. Last second.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, a motion is made by Mayor Pro Tim Tanaka and a second by Councilmember Francis. Will you call the roll, please?
Mayor Pro Tim Tanaka.
Uh, yes, but I think that was Councilmember Henderson.
Oh, okay. Well, let's make it Henderson then.
Okay, Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Francis.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Tanaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Cascanian.
Yes.
Mayor Serta.
Yes. Okay, let's move on to item number fifteen B, this is city manager.
Mayor Serta, members of the city council, agenda item fifteen B is to award construction contract for the pedestrian safety improvement fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Project, job number nine nine three three two Ruiz Concrete and Paving Incorporated in the amount of two hundred and eighty-five thousand six thirty-five, and declare California Environmental Quality Act or CEQA exemption, approve the project plans and specifications and budget contingencies. The pedestrian safety project will upgrade and or replace damaged curb and gutter, sidewalks, driveways, and trees at various locations throughout the city. Locations have been selected from the residential request list. These locations have been identified as deficient and will improve accessibility, safety, and aesthetics. The environmental assessment has been prepared in accordance with the CEQA guidelines. It has been determined that the project is categorically exempt. The following bids were received on March twenty-third, twenty twenty-two. Ruiz Concrete and Paving Incorporated out of Long Beach, two eighty-five, six thirty-five. Calvin Incorporated out of Santa Maria, two ninety, two hundred and ninety-nine thousand nine nine six. T V R Construction Engineering LLC out of Riverside, three hundred and nineteen thousand and eighty dollars. C J Concrete Construction, Inc., from Santa Fe Springs, at three hundred and eighty-two, seven twenty-six. Gentry General Engineering Incorporated out of Rancho Cucamonga, three ninety-five, oh two one fifty. And lastly, Cassick Construction Incorporated out of Chino, at six hundred and four, forty-four thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars. Ruiz Concrete and Paving Incorporated was the lowest responsible responsive bidder. They are a state-licensed contractor with verified successful construction experience in the field and will be required to meet all bonding and financial standards. The tentative construction start date is June twenty twenty-two with an anticipated project completion in August twenty twenty-two. The financial impact and costs, the approved budget is three hundred and eighty thousand from Measure R and S B eight twenty-one. Design face expenditures to date is ten thousand dollars. Anticipated construction and administration and inspections of fifty thousand dollars. The amount requested for construction contract is two hundred and eighty-five thousand six thirty-five. The remaining uh balance, which is the twelve percent contingency, is at thirty-four thousand three sixty-five. What is required tonight is to award a co- uh construction contract, declare CEQA exemption, approve the project plans and specifications, and approve expenditures of remaining budget as contingency.
Okay. Uh, does any member of the council have any comments or questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Um, how many sites are 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 impacted? Or how many sites were selected? You said it was from residential recommendation?
Look at the bid package. Um, I I don't know that number. I can give it to you, though.
Okay, and um, can sites be added to the project, or this is a it is what it is and that's it, and once it's?
No, absolutely. In this project, so so essentially what this is, this is removing concrete panels lifted by trees and replacing them. And so what we do when we find uh panels that are out of place and displaced, we ramp them, we asphalt them, we paint them, and then we come in with this contract and replace them. You'll notice it's a rather high contingency. Usually we have ten percent. We've got twelve percent on this because that always happens when people see us removing one one panel. Uh, they'll alert us to one that we're not knowledgeable of, so this project always grows because people will alert us to to the other needs. And so, absolutely, if there's other locations, uh, please let us know.
Okay, and does this include any tree removal or?
Yes.
I I imagine, well, at least from what I've observed, the concrete panels are lifted because of the tree roots that are growing. So I, would that include movement of the tree, removal of the tree that may have caused the the problem, or?
It does, and and what happens is we try not to remove trees, but oftentimes, in order to make the concrete flat, we have to remove such a a large amount of the roots that go into the lawn and cross the sidewalk that we would destabilize the tree if we left it. So, uh, in limited cases, trees will be removed, but we we do everything we can not to.
In in the case where a tree has to be removed, will it be replaced?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and if uh if people do have, uh, residents do have recommendations, they can contact your office?
They can. Um, we we will probably eat up that twelve percent contingency rather quickly. Uh, now now that now that people know that they can give me a call and we can add them, uh, but yes, uh, we we want to spend the money. We want to remove the liability and do do the best we can. So, uh, they can contact the Public Works Department at City Hall, and we'll do our best to add them.
And this doesn't come out of general fund money? Or is this capital-proved money or general fund or how? What's the finance?
Measure R and S B eight twenty-one, so those are both restricted funds that are only to be used for improvements in the public right away into the streets, uh, per for the laws that regulate those funding sources.
Thank you, Director Riggs.
Okay.
Any more questions or comments? Minister Clerk, do we have anybody from the public?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we do have one hand up.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, yes. Hi, uh, good afternoon, city council. Um, this is an excellent project. I just wanted to um talk about one specific location, you know, since we're in city council right now, um, to look into for city coun- for public works to look into. From Budlong, it's Mer- on Marine Avenue, if you want, if if anyone wants to write this down, it's going to be on Marine Avenue, and it's going to be between Budlong Avenue and Van Buren Avenue. Uh, there's a sidewalk, literally the sidewalk is attached, it it's cement, so it's a cement and asphalt. Um, it's literally touches. It's it's only, I would say, it the curb is not even two point five or maybe, it it's 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 where a car could literally drive onto the 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 walkway, the cement uh sidewalk. So I would say if city, if uh, you know, if you if possibly, you know, rip down, rip out that sidewalk and increase the height of that sidewalk. Um, so it's going to be on Marine Avenue between Budlong Avenue and Van Buren Avenue. Um, and the sidewalk, i- essentially, it's not even, the curb, you can't even see the curb. The curb is like mushed in or blended in with the the street. So, yes, thank you so much. And it's not the curb, it's the sidewalk, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, any more, um, members of the public wish to comment?
No, Madam Mayor, we have no others.
Okay. Okay, if there are no more questions or comments, then can I get a motion to um award the construction contract? Um, also, as part of that, we're going to be um declaring this as CEQA exemption and approving the project plans and specification, as well as approving the expenditures and remaining budget as contingency. Make it a motion. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Who seconded? Okay, Minister Clerk, there was a motion made by Mayor Pro Tim Tanaka and a second by Councilmember Cascanian. Will you call the roll, please?
Mayor Pro Tim Tanaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Cascanian.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Francis.
Yes.
Mayor Serta.
Yes. Okay, next we're going to move on to council directives. Does anybody at this time have any directives? Okay, Councilmember Cascanian, go ahead and go first.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a couple of them. Uh, if I can get second. Uh, as we all know, uh, month of April, it's uh Armenian genocide or Armenian history month, I would say. And the Armenian genocide, it's in uh ten days, April twenty-fourth, and I would like to request if the City of Gardena can issue a proclamation regarding Armenian genocide memorial.
I second it.
Thank you, Councilmember Francis. And my second directive is, uh, could be a directive or a question to the the city manager. Uh, city manager, uh, a few months back, uh, I did requested, I did ask you actually to follow up with the casinos, the Hustler and the Lucky Lady. Since I'm a businessman, I'm in the business industry, you know, I I know the the procedures. Uh, since the casino was closed and there is a, you know, something they called insurance, and they have insurance for lost revenues. And I asked the city manager if he can follow up on this one and see if we can, you know, get our ship, uh, you know, piece of pie on it, so. And uh, if we can have a directive for that, and the city manager can follow up on this for me.
Um, Councilmember Cascanian, uh, I can address that now. I I don't, I don't need a directive for that. I do recall, um, we had a lengthy conversation on this. I I believe it was after a financial committee meeting that you brought this to my attention. Um, we had a le- rather lengthy conversation. I did promise you that I would look into it uh, and um, see that um, if there's anything that we can recover. Uh, as you mentioned during your conversation, there's no way that a business of, you know, multi-million or million-dollar business such as the Lucky Lady being shut down, being shut down like that due to unforeseen uh damages would not have um uh, business interruption insurance, I believe is what you.
Yes.
Right.
Um, so we did look into that. Um, we did work diligently with the folks over at the uh Lucky Lady, the Flint Group, and I believe we received a rather large sum of money, uh, are that insurance, um, are are part of that insurance, and I believe it's one point eight, one point seven, one point eight million to augment the loss of revenue that we uh experienced uh during the shutdown of Lucky Lady. So, um, yeah, I'd be happy to write that up in the report if you'd like, but I can tell you verbally that um, that we did receive the the money already.
Perfect, so it worked out.
Yes, yes. So that, any 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 and all um information that we received, that you received during the budget and whatnot, uh, the the reserve levels that we said, uh, the percentage did not include that one point eight million dollars. So we're actually one point eight million dollars better off because of that.
Perfect.
It's a larger, it's a large sum of money.
Oh, wow. One point eight million dollars, it's a lot of money.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you very much for the following up on that. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other directives?
Uh, I do have, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
I was wondering, it kind of uh goes into what Councilmember Cascanian was asking about, asking about, but I was wondering if we can get an update on uh the COVID relief money that's been um expended for our small businesses, given out to small, for our small businesses. Someone asked me about um, what what we did with the money and who got it. I don't know if we can say who got it, but um, how many businesses are, who benefited from COVID relief money?
Councilmember Francis, I believe a num- a few meetings ago, I believe we we provided a full report on on that. We could, I could certainly um resubmit the uh, report that we um, uh, generated for you through a memo. There hasn't been any relief money since then, so it'd just be, you know, if you'd like, you know, I could just resubmit that and and um, you know, for your review.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much. I get, you know, and the other one is, well, on the same lines, for COVID relief money for renters. Um, just regular residential renters, did we get uh?
We can include that in the report because I believe that that's already covered there, too.
Okay.
For renters.
Money's gone, right, for for the renters? There's no more COVID relief money for the renters?
Correct.
Okay, and uh, I say I have two more now. I'm done, I promise. So, and um, on our plans for real opening the city, because I keep asking, getting questions about, well, we're going to open the parks, we're going to do this. Is there any way that we can update our our city uh community folks to let them know when we might be opening or?
Sure, um. At at this time.
I know it's it's hard to predict, but.
Right, uh, at this time, the reason why we haven't uh gone back fully opening, we are open, uh, the city's open. Uh, are you referring to our in-person meetings?
Well, yeah, too, and uh, just um, so there are no more restrictions, you know, we can come and go to City Hall and back to the parks as 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 we were before, or quote-unquote, back to normal.
Uh, I mean, we can, we can certainly put it out there as far as um, when we think that would happen. The the issue at hand is that um, we still have uh some hesitation as far as future variants that are, uh, that we've been hearing from um uh, Europe and and other parts of the world. The last thing we want to do is is go back to in-person meetings and um, remove all the restrictions, remove all the barriers and whatnot, and then having to go back there because of the spikes and numbers. Um, you know, the the numbers that we're seeing uh per my COVID nineteen report, I mean, it's it's not a whole lot of case counts since the last meeting, two weeks ago, it's only ninety-six, because more people are vaccinated. That's, that number really isn't alarming because uh, just because you get COVID nowadays doesn't mean it's serious. The alarming part of that is the the death count actually increased by five, in which we didn't experience that uh, two, uh, four weeks ago. So with that, I mean, we're still hesitant as far as completely, you know, opening and removing barriers and whatnot, uh, and and ultimately going back to um in-person meetings. Um, what 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 type of messaging did you, and do we have a second for the messaging as far as website, wh- what what type of medium were you looking for?
There's anything on the website, uh, you know, we're almost there, or we're getting better. Just something to encourage people, or, you know, as soon as soon as we get good news, we'll get good news, or just a little something.
We can put another PSA out. We can put a PSA out. Just update a PSA. We can do that.
Yeah, just just.
We can do that.
Something to encourage, uh, folks, you know, some good news about uh that we'll look forward to.
Okay, just just uh, for formality, um, do we have a second? Okay, just, just, uh, for formality, um, do we have a second? Madam Mayor, did you second that?
I'll, I'll second that.
I'll second it.
I'll second it. I wanted to add in that PSA, could we also inform everybody when the council meetings are televised and when we have them live and what to rebroadcast?
Yeah. Thank you, that'd be great.
We can, we can put that out in our website and in social media as well.
Yeah, yeah, because remember, community engagement was a part of our, uh, environmental justice, uh, document.
Yes, absolutely.
And, um, I remember, um, I don't know, we probably are already working on April thirty, but it's Take Back Drugs Day, where folks can, um, come to a particular location to, um, you know, dispose of their unexpired prescriptions and unused prescriptions. And I remember I thought a couple of years ago, we had it at the police department, we had a.
Still there.
It's still there. So, um, so can we just maybe set a day or say, you know, on this day, you can bring your drugs back or something to.
Does A-DAP do that? I thought A-DAP did that.
I don't know.
Take Back Day.
I hadn't heard.
A-DAP did.
They did?
That was a specific day.
Last year it was in front of.
In fact, I think we just, it's already gone by.
Okay, I'll talk to them about that and just.
But we do have the bin. We have the bin that's there year round.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't see it. I didn't know it was there. And also, um, uh, in, I got a, a email requesting us to write a letter of support to Congresswoman Maxine Waters in support of, uh, a grant proposal for, um, divided funding for Easter sales in Southern California. And they're specifically with the area focused on autism therapy services. Could we, um, can we do that?
I'll second that. If that's a directive, I'll second.
Yes. Yes. And there was one more. It was also asking a letter of support for, if I can find it. For the, uh, oh, here it is. It's California Interagency on Homelessness. They have released a request proposal for California homeless families. And they, they're offering grants. They have about thirty million dollars that they're, they're willing to, um, that a, a organization can, um, win. And, but this is, I like this one because this is specifically aimed toward families. Because I think in our, uh, local, local LSU USD district, there were probably about two hundred families that are homeless. So could we, uh, put together a letter of support of?
Is, Councilwoman Francis, just for clarification, is the letter in support of a specific organization that's applying for the funding? Or?
Uh, yeah, I can, I can double check. There's the California Inter, Interagency on Homelessness. And they, they talked about partnering with, um, another agency that may have, may already be providing services.
So they're seeking a letter of support from the city so that they can get the funding?
Mm-hmm. Or we can partner with them.
We need to know more about them first.
Okay.
Just to be honest.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
If we could send that, Councilwoman Francis, to Alex and have her distribute it to everyone and then you guys can all take a look at it and then maybe decide in the future, unless there's a deadline and then you can let us know. We'll work with you to get that information distributed to everyone.
All right, thank you. And that's, that's it.
Okay, are there any other directors? Mark, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. City Mayor, that's what I was talking about, is our homeless plan depending upon us getting some funding for homelessness. Because I don't think our plan is done yet, correct? It's still being developed.
That is correct.
Okay. So I have one directive, one question. In regards to traffic mitigation and countermeasures research, can we have, uh, PD look at, uh, some additional countermeasure possibilities for one four seven and one five four, one, one five seven? And everything to, to look at some countermeasures for that. I definitely would like a second for that.
A second, uh.
Thank you. And I have one question in regards to the, the status of the Wi-Fi, uh, project that we're working on for the pilot at Raleigh Park. I just want to know where we are in that.
We're gonna have a, sir, we're gonna have a, a report on that. Um, we have, um, set aside some funds for that. Um, we just have to execute.
Okay.
The, um, fiber optic company that, um, the COG used, um, I believe there's some technical issues that they're trying to resolve.
Okay.
The.
Let me know if you need anything from me.
Absolutely. I might have, I might have to tap in.
Right, Mayor Pro Tem is a vocal member of the COG, so you can.
And, and Mark, on that note, there is four hundred thousand available still for broadband. They just kind of told me that, uh, yesterday. So you might want to tap into that.
All right, outstanding. Thank you. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
We're also, Councilmember Henderson, we're also applying for funding, um, for the, uh, uh, citywide park, uh, Wi-Fi program. So, I mean, if we don't have, uh, funding for that from other sources, we can, you know, we can, uh, we are applying for that. Um, so hopefully we'll get that so that, uh, relieves a burden on the general.
All right, thank you.
Any more directors? No? Okay, let's move on to our city manager remarks regarding our directors.
Mayor Serta and members of the city council, uh, I only have a couple, uh, at this time. Um, I'd like to, uh, play a short video that has been, uh, uh, provided to us by Recreation and, and Human Services. And since our last meeting, the city received, uh, one point four million dollars to complete the Aquatic and Senior Center renovation project and it's all, and also held the groundbreaking ceremony in front of Print Pool. Uh, we are excited to see the final project that is, uh, expected to be completed, uh, as far as the Print Pool is concerned, um, in twenty twenty-four. Uh, we're also ramping up for a very, very busy season, uh, so follow us on social media. Stay known, uh, know about all of our upcoming events. At this time, I'd like to, um, play the video.
City Manager Astorio, are you going to be sharing your screen or are you looking for us to do it?
I was looking for you guys to, to do it.
Okay, I'm sorry. It sounded like. Okay, no problem.
Okay. Thank you very much, uh, uh, Director Santin and the rest of, um, Recreation and Human Services for, um, putting on that video. Got a very busy season, uh, ahead of us. Uh, so, uh, thank you very much. Last but not least, um, I do have an announcement. Um, after a long, uh, lengthy, um, search, uh, for, uh, our new economic development manager, I am pleased to, um, present and introduce to you, um, Ms. Jackie Choi. Jackie, are you able to, uh, join us for a quick, um, introduction? Jackie, how are you?
Good evening, hello.
So let me, uh, before I invite you to, to say a few words and then for, uh, uh, Mayor and, uh, councilmembers, um, maybe, uh, ask a couple of questions. I'm gonna read a short bio for, uh, Ms. Choi. Um, Ms. Jackie Choi comes, uh, to the City of Gardena with over nine years of experience performing economic development for two Southern California cities. She most recently left the City of Bell after seven years as their senior economic, uh, development specialist. And while in Bell, she project managed development projects, uh, marketing efforts and business assistance activities. Prior to this, she had both interned and worked for the City of La Habra's Housing and Economic Development Division. While there, she assisted, uh, with the CDBG-funded projects, economic development promotional activities, and staffed the city's Economic Development Ad-Hoc Committee that focused on rebranding the city. Jackie obtained her bachelor's degree from the University of Southern California in Public Policy Management and Planning. She was born in Seoul, South Korea, and raised in Brea, Orange County. Jackie is dedicated to working in the City of Gardena and is already scheduled to relocate to the South Bay. During her free time, she enjoys traveling and spending time with her family and friends. So Jackie, welcome aboard. Um, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, um, good evening, Madam Mayor and the members of the city council. Um, thank you for the opportunity, opportunity for me to join and serve the Gardena community. Um, I am very excited to be proactively engaged with the business community, the new business attractions, um, working with developers and, you know, promoting and strengthening the, the city's asset to take Gardena's economic development to the next level, uh, next step. So, um, thank you and I look forward to meeting everyone in person.
All right. All right, well, Jackie, welcome to the Gardena family here. Happy to have you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you so much.
A pre-round of applause of all the work that she's going to be doing. Welcome.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Madam Mayor, I did, uh, uh, inform her that, uh, we are set to, uh, win the, uh, most business friendly award. We're, we're, we, we have to win that. I mean.
Just have to.
No pressure. Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, uh, that ends my, um, city manager report.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Cascanian, sir?
Yeah, I have a question to the city manager about, uh, right now, the slide shows that we saw. Can, can I have kind of a little explanation? How is the, uh, bingo under the sea will work? You know, how is that what's going to work out? It says bingo under sea or sea under bingo, whatever, the butterfly?
Oh, the bingo under the sea? So.
Yeah, how is that works? I mean, how is it going to play bingo under the sea?
So we have, obviously, we're not going to be, um, going to be underwater.
I know, yeah, of course, obviously. We're not going to go snorkeling under the water.
No, no.
Once we have our pool, we can do that, Councilman Cascanian.
We, we will have that during the Aquatics. Um, so, um, we're, we're gonna have a lot of, um, props and a lot of, um, it's gonna be for our senior bingo. And so a lot of creative juices out of, um, obviously, again, from Director Santin and, um, her staff. It's basically a sea theme. Um, she's actually, you know, informing me right now, she's texting me, she, she told me to tell you that, uh, to hold your breath. Obviously, it's a joke. So, uh, but no, it's, it's gonna be fun. It's gonna be, um, a lot of, um, entertainment. It's gonna be a lot of, um, um, very creative, um, ways to make you feel like, uh, you're in, you know, under the, under the sea and, and while playing bingo.
So the Aquaman will be there probably, right?
Probably.
Well, I don't, I don't know if, uh, if he'll be there, but, uh, maybe we can hire him. I, I don't know.
Looking for people who are the custom council members.
But if you, if you went to the casino night, you, you can tell how, um, Director Santin, or, or, yeah, you can tell how they, they do things and it's, it's top notch. I mean, it's, it's, it's good stuff. So.
Thank you.
Without, you know, you know, uh, revealing too much of it, um, we'll just have to wait and see.
Well, since none of us are old enough to play, then, uh, we can go and observe. So, okay? All right. Any more questions about the council, I mean, councilor, about the city managers or report?
I think the mayor pro tem had a question.
Well, she said none of us are old enough. I am.
None of you are old enough. I'm just gonna leave it at that. Stop. I'm leaving it at that. Okay, so let's move on to council remarks here. We're gonna begin tonight with Councilwoman Francis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, since our, our last meeting, I attended the District One Neighborhood Watch Meeting. Also attended the garden party where, uh, Congresswoman Maxine Waters presented us with that wonderful big check. So that was exciting. Also attended a candidate forum for the special election of AD sixty-two or Assembly Justice sixty-two, a special election to replace, uh, Autumn Burden. And I'm elected delegate for the Los Angeles Democratic Party. So I, because, um, we, the, our normal meeting date was moved to March twenty-ninth. I was able to attend, uh, that meeting as well. I'd also like to take, uh, this moment to welcome our new Economic Development Director, uh, Jackie Choi. We've been waiting for you. So we're so happy to have you aboard. And thank you so much for, uh, accepting to, uh, work here in Gardena. And I look forward to meeting and talking with you about some of, uh, your ideas and where you, you'd like to see the city go. So glad you're here. And, um, as one reminder, everybody, it is spring break, so we have a lot of young people around. Uh, the kids are on vacation now, as I am too, thank goodness. And, um, this particular month, it's unusual, it's a coincidence because Easter and Ramadan and Passover are all celebrated in the same month. It's, uh, it's a coincidence. I think it happens not all, not very often. But, um, I'd just like to say, no matter how you celebrate or what you're celebrating, I wish you a safe and healthy, uh, holiday season. And also want to encourage everyone, as long as we're still going through this pandemic, I encourage everyone to remain diligent in your practices to keep you and your family safe and healthy. And we're gonna get through this and I firmly believe that better days are ahead. Uh, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up is, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Tanaka.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I also, uh, attended the tea party and, uh, thank you, uh, Ms. Wa, Congresswoman Waters, for, uh, helping us out and listening to our mayor, who went and solicited those funds. We thank you. Uh, I attended the COG's twenty-second annual general assembly. Uh, it was actually, um, our first live event. Uh, it was, it was done very well. It was at the Cartonson Community Center. Um, I had lunch with, uh, Greg Sujiuchi, uh, and I believe that was his first event that he was able to see what the COG kind of does and what it's about. And we saw some futuristic stuff coming from the aerospace industry out of El Segundo. So it was, uh, it was, it was a great day to, uh, kind of hang out and listen to the speakers. Uh, I attended, uh, Mary Meritus, uh, Ed Russ's funeral. Uh, it was a good celebration. Um, a lot of people, uh, from the past attended. Uh, went to the VFW, uh, nineteen sixty-one, thirty-two sixty-one. Um, I guess it was kind of a, uh, celebration of, uh, I think for the, uh, few, four of our veterans. Uh, they were honored, uh, with quilts, which were just handmade and they were, they were just really beautiful. Um, well, I think Mark wanted one, uh, but it was, they were really done really well. It was just something that was exciting and, and we congratulated those, uh, veterans that received that. Uh, attended, uh, police promotion, Sergeant, uh, Renaga. Congratulations. I know he'll do well. Uh, attended three days at the. Attended three days at the Grand Prix of Long Beach. Attended the Aquatics Center, Senior Center, groundbreaking. Thank you to all those that set that up and participated. It was a great day just to know that this project is moving forward. And then attended the Police Foundation Scholarships, which it's always great to see scholarships being given out to our young people, because that's our future, and the foundation does a great job, they gave out more money this year. The exciting part this year was, I believe, two of our officers on the PD, their children received scholarships to help them, which is really an honor for our department members to get those. Also attended the COG String Committee Meeting, and right after that, we attended a special COG Board meeting. So that so ends my report, other than have a great Easter weekend. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And next up is Councilmember Cascanian.
Madam Mayor, since our last meeting, I also attended the Garden Party or the Tea Party with Congresswoman Maxine Waters, and I sincerely thank her for giving us, or bringing us that $1.4 million. It's a big deal, you know, it's a good money, it will help us to move on with our projects. And the following day, I gotta go through my notes over here on my cellphone, so. On Tuesday 29th, I attend the pinning ceremony for Officer Viscocho. I hope I'm saying the last thing correct, so welcome to the family, officers. And on the 30th, I attended Detective Renega's promotion to sergeant, me too as well. Attended the luncheon for the Gardena Police Foundation. And thank you to John Sand Mayor for, you know, the promoting or supporting the luncheon. Thank you, Madam City Attorney. And Long Beach Grand Prix, I just went for one day, it was too hot to handle it. And groundbreaking as well. And I would like to wish my Muslim friends, Happy Ramadan, my Jewish friends, Happy Passover, and my Christian friends and family, he is risen, Happy Easter. And that's end my report, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And for myself, I too attended pretty much some of the same, some of them, but just about all the events that the others attended, the Garden Tea Party, and it was such a great event. And I just wanna give a special thanks to our Recreation and Human Services Department for putting that event together so quickly. I literally got a phone call on Thursday and called the staff that same day, and they put this together like the following week, and it was so nice. And we really have an awesome team, so a special thank you to you guys for just even coming up with that idea of the Garden Tea Party, I never would have thought of that. And I'm just glad we had a reason to celebrate, the Congresswoman and just being so generous to Gardena, always remembering us and always taking the time to reach out to us and or when we reach out to her and tell her some of our needs and things that we need. It's always good when you have, you know, a good working relationship with your elected officials higher than you, like Congresswoman Waters, because she definitely is out there fighting for us. And always, it seems like sometimes, it's just specifically for Gardena, because she's always so generous to us, so I really appreciate that. I also attended the funeral services of our former mayor, Ed Russ. And it was a, it was a very nice ceremony, you know, as well as expected, even though it was a funeral, and to see so many people out there, just to kinda honor his life. I too also attended the pinning ceremony for the new officer who transferred here from LAX. And I think Councilmember Cascanian said his name right, Officer Viscocha?
Viscocho.
What he said, what he said, yeah. So it was really great to see, we have one more officer here, an officer coming over already with the experience. We don't have to put him through the academy, that's a nice thing. And so happy to have him here as well, as well as, I did actually make it to the ceremony for the promotion for Sergeant Renega, but I got here right at the end, just at the end, just to congratulate him. But it's always, it's great whenever we can promote anybody in any of our departments. It's just really great watching people grow and, and move up from the time that, some of them started as interns here, and just seeing how they just move up, so that's always a good thing, to see your staff grow and, and move up in various positions here. So I was happy to be a part of that. I also attended the ICA Conference last weekend, or maybe it was the weekend before that, and a lot of good information we learned there, I say "we" because Councilmember Henderson was there as well. And they had a lot of great things they were talking about as it related to these people. Oh my gosh, what is it, people doing the donuts in the street, like that street race, and just different topics what they were talking about. Some of the new things that different fire departments that are doing, and even something that LA County Fire, a project they have, a pilot project they have, where they have a nurse practitioner go out on some of the calls of people, and how people can follow up, I'm sorry, how the nurse practitioner can follow up with the patient, and maybe less the number of times, if it's a repeat person that's calling the fire department, maybe where a nurse practitioner falling back up with them, it kinda lessens them calling 911, especially if maybe it's not an emergency, maybe it's something that could be handled with a follow-up appointment. So we got a chance to learn some interesting information about things like that, as well as just talking with some of our other utility companies like Southern California Edison, as well as the gas company out there, as they were telling us about a lot of great projects that they have going on that are available to the community, so platter, I was able to attend, learned a lot of good information there. I too also attended the groundbreaking for our new Aquatics Center, and looking forward to that, that's, that's gonna be really great. I've had so many people ask us about our pool, and I encourage everybody, go on the website so you can watch the progress of, you know, where, how it's going, and hopefully we can even complete it before completion date, I doubt that's gonna happen, but you never know, maybe. And then also, I attended the Police Foundation Scholarship Luncheon. And I too would like to thank our city attorney Vasquez, your, your office for donating that extra to the scholarship fund. I think that was really awesome, and we just appreciate how you guys have just kinda invested back with us here in the city of Gardena. I thought that was really, really nice, and even sharing your experiences on how beneficial it is when young people get scholarships, and, you know, how they can give back as they move forward in life. And then also, I attended along with a council member, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tem Tanaka, the barbecue at the VFW where we honored those veterans there, and we sat and had lunch with them, and we talked with them, and we got a chance to hear a few old war stories, things that I couldn't even imagine going on, and just how they were handling it, so that was a lot of fun. And it's always great when you can talk with people and just kinda hear some of the things they were, they were doing back during World War II and, and so on. So that was a really, that was a great thing to attend. And then lastly, I attended the funeral services for one of our officers, his mom who passed away, Officer Dixon, attended her funeral services on yesterday, and I'd just like to add the name Cynthia Ann Evans to our adjournment here. And, you know, it's always an unfortunate thing when we lose one of our family members, so just knowing that we're here just in support of him while he's going through that time. So with that, that ends my remarks, so next up is Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I definitely wanna welcome this Jackie Choi to our city as our new Economic Developer or Development Director. That's gonna be a welcome position to feel, so we're looking forward to all the great things that she brings as we work in collaboration. Since our last meeting, I attended the tea with Congresswoman Waters as well, as many of you stated, so that was great. Our groundbreaking at the Aquatic Center and Senior Center, that was wonderful. Madam Mayor, it was great for you to come to the ICA Conference, and I guess that's Indian Wells and everything. And I, I hope you were able to pick on the major theme, as we talked about, what other cities are doing, how some of the best practices we've already kinda implemented and deployed in our city. So I, I take a great sense of pride in that, and I wanna thank my colleagues as well for supporting some of the things in each other in regards to the things that we do, because we're actually a best-practice city in a lot of regards, so that's a great thing. I was also at District One Holly Park Area Meeting the other day. I attended my responsible governance committee with the Los Angeles Business Federation. Interesting conversations there, so stay tuned, I'll have some more data. I attended the Business Federation University of Southern California Soul Price School Forum on homelessness, homelessness forum with real action items in regards to how we can combat homelessness within LA County and within our individual cities, so that was very well-received. I attended our SCAG, my SCAG Regional Council Meeting, representing our city Hawthorne and Inglewood. And SCAG is ramping up, again, we talked about the RENA numbers and everything, and as I think somebody stated before, Attorney Crannet and everything, in regards to some of the RENA numbers being really out of whack for a lot of cities. So now, we're trying to figure out what that means and everything. I think that die has already been cast, and we're all kinda just responding to what that, that outcome is, but everybody's got concerns about RENA, so I just always try to encourage our other colleagues in other cities, that local control is the, the order of the day, we have to regain our control for our community so we can see the community become what we desire to become, and the "we" is the collective "we", not the five of us, but all 62,000 residents of the city of Gardena. I was at the Police Foundation Scholarship Luncheon, I got there towards the end, but it was great to see the children, as Mayor Pro Tem stated, receive some scholarships as well. So again, we're feeding and investing in our own and everything like that, so I think that was a great thing. I think one of the highlights was being at the VFW Luncheon. I left before the mayor got there and everything, but it was great, I was with their mayor Pro Tem. And it's interesting how now I'm a veteran of a foreign war, so I could share stories as well and everything. So that was a new experience for me, to be sitting there and sharing stories with, with these seasoned veterans, thanking them for their service and everything, so my stories are pretty good too now. So it was, it was a great time and everything.
Fit right in.
Yeah, it was a part of my own personal maturation process, that's coming from a kid to now being a 50-plus-year-old man. So that was a great thing for me. I wanna say Happy Easter, everybody, those are celebrating Passover in our community. Hanging there, those hanging Ramadan, try to stay home and don't go to work, because that's a tough time, being at work when you're sacrificing not eating and drinking, so just stay home. So all my employees at my job that celebrate Ramadan, I just leave them alone during this time and everything, as they're working closer on their faith and everything like that. And I just wanna encourage our community to continue to embrace each other, COVID is still around, so we have to be vigilant there, and if you're eligible to get your first, second, or your booster now, your second booster, please do so as you wanna preserve your life, Madam Mayor, so ends my report.
Okay, thank you. I just wanna add one more thing to that ICA, you know, it was interesting, as we're sitting there while they have all the different segments, and I had different people from different cities go, hey, are you guys doing any of this stuff that they're talking about? And I'm like, we've been doing that for some time now, and it was interesting. I didn't wanna brag, but I'm like, oh yeah, we, we've been doing that for about 10 years now, or five years. And they were there with their city managers, they're like, look, 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 they're doing it, they're doing it. And I go, if you like, just go on our website, it shows some of the information, but yeah, so. I don't know, maybe next time we might need to be some of the speakers for some of the events and tell them how it's, how it's going, and, you know, the success we've had for certain things, so, but that's all, so. Anyway, announcements, all of them will mention tonight in our, in the present, in the video presentation that we had, so I'm gonna move on to remembrances here. Tonight, we're gonna adjourn in memory of Mr. Roy Jackson, who is 75 years of age, a veteran and a Gardena resident. Mr. Jackson was also a client of the Senior Meals Program. We're also gonna adjourn in memory of, we're also gonna adjourn in memory of Mrs. Hadeko Kawahara, who is 92 years of age, longtime Gardena resident and a client of the Senior Meals Program. She is survived by her husband Herbert. We're also gonna adjourn in memory of Mrs. Blanca Almeida, who was 88 years of age. Mrs. Almeida was a client of the City of Gardena Senior Citizen Daycare Center. We're also gonna adjourn in memory of Dr. Alfonso Bays, who had his medical practice in the city of Gardena and served the Gardena community for over 40 years. We're also adjourning in memory of Mr. I.L. Koo Lee, who is 89 years of age, the beloved grandfather of Catherine Reed, Records Management Coordinator within the city clerk's office. And lastly, we're gonna adjourn in memory of Ms. Cynthia Ann Evans, who was a mother of Officer Sean Dixon. So at this time, the city of Gardena, I'm sorry, the Gardena City Council will adjourn to the closed session portion of our city council meeting at 7:00 PM, followed by the regular city council meeting at 7:30 PM on Tuesday, April 26, 2022. We are adjourned. Okay, thank you, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Night, y'all.
Good night.